spaces in the sta- in the audience, people that kind of grew up with, people that you've worked with, people that you've hired, um, people that uh I taught P E to many, many years ago. So it just makes your heart feel good that you're there's so many people here that so many people are still in our district. So welcome. I hope everybody has a great school year. You assistant principal, principals are out there and I know you will do a fantastic job. Now I gotta say one shout out though, cause I always say to embarrass her, the first hire I ever had, first hire at L say to embarrass her, the first hire I ever had, first hire at Elroy Middle School, the first hire is about the second day I was there, I hired Angela McDonald as a science teacher. And I needed to be blessed every day with that hire. But I'm glad what she's doing. Congratulations on your first principalship at Elroy College. So the chair declares that there is a quorum present for the August 12th, 2025 Richmond County Board of Education meeting. Will the board please come to order? Mr. Mason?
And now it's all me, the pledge of allegiance.
The allegiance to the fire of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Board members, you have the open session minutes from our July meeting. Please take a look at them if you've not done so, and if so, are there any changes that need to be made? I'm not hearing any ch-.
Make a motion.
Make a motion by Mr. Ethers. Do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Ornsby. Any discussion? All for everybody saying aye. All opposed? Thank you. Dr. Farrell, are there any changes to the agenda?
No, sir.
We are rocking and rolling. Dr. Farrell, the first order of business is on you.
Yeah, so we had talked about this last year, and so I'm excited to have the vast majority of our school-based administrators here tonight. And so it gives you all an opportunity to put a face with a name and for them to do the same. So what I'll do is just go down our list if it works for those of you out there. And we'll go by school. And if you'll stand when I call your name so that you can, and you can wave to the board or just smile to the board. And then we'll just keep going down the list. So our leadership from Ashley Chapel Education Center, our brand new principal, Tiffany Spencer. And Mr. Benny Levine are the assistant principal. At Cordova Middle School, we have Mr. Scott Witheroe as the principal. And Ms. Lexus Rivers as assistant principal. At East Rockingham Elementary School, we have Joy Watson as principal. And Dr. Collins couldn't be with us tonight, but she will come next month. And at Elroy Middle School, we have Dr. Joey Marie. At Fairview Heights Elementary School, we have, representing the school tonight, Ms. Collard couldn't be here, but Blair Small as assistant principal. For Hamlet Middle School, we have Principal Monica Robinson. And Assistant Principal Matthew Poston. For LJ Bell, we have Principal Meredith Norwood. And Assistant Principal Mark Goldberg. And for Mineral Springs Elementary School, we have Dr. Teresa Gardner. And Rebecca Cagle as the assistant principal. For Monroe Avenue, we have Ish Gomez as president. And Suzanne Hudson as assistant principal. And for Richmond Early College, as Mr. Satterfield said, we have his first hire as teacher, Miss Angela McDonald. For Richmond Senior High School, we have Principal Ms. Joyce McCray. And I think we have most of her list of assistant principals here. We have Mr. Grant Henson. Mr. Spencer Shaw. Ms. Stephanie Upton. Ms. Karen Allen. And Mr. Rodney Byers. Right. And for Rockingham Middle School, we have Principal Ms. Wendy Taylor. Assistant Principal Ms. Neely Herndon. And Assistant Principal Mr. Chuck Wright. And for Washington Street, we have Principal Ms. Dana Gunnell. And Assistant Principal Ms. Caitlin Elvis. And for West Rockingham Elementary School, we have Principal Ms. Melanie Lee. So again, I just wanted to give you all an opportunity to put a face with a name. We have some new administrators. We are all very excited. We do have some changes in our leadership in a number of our schools this year. My team and I put a lot of effort and thought into that, and I think we've made some really good choices. And I think our assistant principals that are new to us and principals that are new to us are gonna do a great job. So thank you all for being here. And I'll turn it back over to you.
Congratulations. Thank you all for stepping up into leadership roles. Rebecca, what year did you graduate, did you graduate from Richmond Senior High?
Two thousand and six.
All right, Ishmael?
Two thousand and nine.
Okay, so you were only in what, a sixth or seventh grade when Rebecca left?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Because I was gonna get Rebecca to tell stories on you, but I can't do that.
Suddenly I feel really old.
Joey will tell you some of the best times ever at Elroy Middle School. It is. Student Services update, Angela Gallagher.
I think that, I think that a number of our principals have other places.
Bye, y'all. Sure you don't want to stay? We'll give you a second, Angela. Let the riffraff get out of here.
Would like to thank the two of you for staying.
I just wanted to say, we're having technical difficulties with our screen, so just if you could just look at board docs, we'd really appreciate it. Yep.
All right. So I'm Angela Gallagher. I'm Director of Student Services. It has been a summer of learning, and I have really enjoyed getting into this role. So I just want to go through a couple of highlights with you guys. The first being that the mental health plan will go to the board at the state in a couple of days. It's due September fifteenth, but you have that in board docs as well. And part of that is the mental health training plan that we have to do. So you have six different trainings that are done for our new staff, which include the youth mental health, suicide prevention, substance abuse, teenage dating violence, child sexual abuse prevention, and sex trafficking prevention. The rest of the staff that are returning will do the youth mental health and suicide prevention. So that is law. That is something we do every year. We have a new platform this year. Principals and the student services team have been trained on that, so we are ready to roll. And the other part of the mental health plan that is new this year is the healthy active children policy that also includes our high school this year. And so what that looks like at the high school is our four blocks will take four minutes each to do some energizers and active healthy things so that we can continue to increase that activity. Our K eight schools already meet all of those requirements through their encores, recess, and PE. So they have all of that. I also wanted to highlight some of the grants within student services right now. We have four grants currently that we're monitoring. We have a community foundations grant in which we got an OAE to assist with hearing screenings. And that came with Whitney McLaurin and before Dr. Jordan left. We also have the confidence project that we're gonna continue to do this year. It will include Hamlet Middle, Ashley Chapel, Elroy Middle, and Cordova Middle. They, last year it was just with Cordova, very successful. So we will continue that and add three more schools. All of those materials will come August eighteenth. We also have nourishing minds, and that is partnering with Richmond County Partnership for Children to provide healthy snacks within the school day, as well as some education material to our students and families. And that will run a lot with our nurses, counselors. Kim Childers is helping to head that up, so she will be a part of that. And we also were awarded the EpiPens for School Grant, which gave us twenty-seven EpiPens for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year on expired medication. So we did receive that one. Yes, that's a lot of, yes.
That's a lot of money right there.
It's a lot of money for those EpiPens. The other piece that I wanted to just update you on is that based off of our principal feedback, we have contracted with Let's Go Learn again this year to build our MTSS behavior framework. We've done a lot of work at our leadership retreat and this past Monday with our pre-K through first grade teachers and teacher assistants and our EC staff. So we will continue that this year, and we are really excited. And so far, the principal feedback has been great. I also wanted to mention that we have something that Dr. Jordan put in place before she left last year for six twelve. It's called Vector Solutions for our students. So we already have a vector side of the world that we train our staff with to make sure they have bloodborne pathogens and all of those things. One thing that our counselors and our support staff often ask for are education materials for six twelve. And so what that looks like with Vector is we have some videos with, and some courses that are on student safety and wellness. And they go through different topics from a peer perspective. So there's lesson plans that our counselors can use with our teachers, with our students, and have conversations. But it's more, it's just a resource for them to be able to use for some of the harder conversations that our counselors deal with, with our students. We got that through a grant as well. And we will pilot that this year and see how it goes. The last thing I have for you is our dropout prevention. We will continue the Mentor Me program this year with Arthur Gillum. He will meet with his staff on August nineteenth at our opening day to train and improve our methods. And he's also going to work with Dr. Smith and myself on our K twelve movement for understanding that everybody in K twelve has a role in our dropout prevention and our graduation rate. And so he's going to have some time in middle schools as well as at the high school. The middle school principals beg for him all the time. So he's gonna spend some time with them, as well as even down to our elementary school levels, going through some things to make sure everybody understands their role in our dropout prevention and our graduation rate. So we feel like with our numbers, we've probably increased our graduation rate five percent, and so we're really excited about that. Nothing is final yet, so those numbers come to you in September from Jennifer Taylor. But we've worked really hard, and he has worked really hard and done some wonderful things. So we are really excited about that. Any questions for me?
What does the statewide average look like on the dropouts? I know we went from seventy-nine to eighty-three. Are we aligned or in line or ahead or?
I think we're ahead.
Okay.
In terms of what I saw with Ms. Taylor. I think we're ahead. I think we're gonna come out ahead this year. I think.
And that eighty-three percent was all the student population, not just that mentor and me.
Oh, right. Yes, yes, yes. Last year, all of our Mentor Me students who had a mentor graduated. Anything else? So I want to just introduce to you, just for a moment, Jason Ganey is here with San Luis Best Care, just to give some updates on what Richmond County Schools has in partnership with them and the services that are offered. So I'll just let him speak for just a moment.
Thank you. It's a great thank you to tell me I have just a moment. Chairman, board members, Dr. Farrell, very good to meet you as well, Ms. Gallagher, and get to know you. We're looking forward to getting to know you better. I need to recognize Ms. Fain. She's really the cornerstone that makes our relationship with the school system work, having been here, what, twenty-seven years? Twenty-seven years with the school system. We did not steal her away, so please don't hold me accountable for that. She said she was retiring, and then we begged her to come after she retired. So I just wanted to share with you some good news, really, of what's happening with our relationship. This is our fourth year in the school system. The student population has doubled. We served a hundred and eighty students this past year. And if you multiply that by the nine months, we saw almost sixteen hundred visits in the school system with the various students that we serve. What we found earlier is most of the time with this particular population of student, when they had an appointment that was off-campus, they ended up missing the whole school day in order to go to that appointment. So if you take those sixteen hundred visits and multiply it by six hours, it's almost ten thousand seat hours that were saved in exchange for a thirty-minute visit in the school system. We've heard, and that's a wonderful thing, by the way. Wonderful thing, because we know as an educator myself, seat time matters and equates to graduation rates, success rates of the students. So we're very excited that, that it cuts down on absences, eliminates barriers to receiving mental health services such as transportation issues. I can't tell you the number of parents that said, "We could not bring them." And so now that you're coming to the school, they can be seen. So that's a wonderful thing as well. Typically, our therapists are at the schools from eight to twelve every day. However, we do have some schools where the numbers have increased so much that they're there until two. We try to be out before twelve due to the fact you have other extracurricular activities a lot of times after lunchtime that seem to interfere sometimes with those appointments. We've also grown our staff. We, Ms. Valerie Jones started part-time going to the school system, and now is full-time in the school system. And now we've added Sarah Regland this past year in the school system. And this coming year, we're adding Lori Locklear. And so you'll have a third therapist that's coming as well, in the coming year as well. So the program is successful, to the point where Moore County heard some things, and Dr. Farrell actually reached out to the Moore County Superintendent. And now we have three therapists in the Moore County school system based on the model in Richmond County. So what we're doing here with you guys, and Dr. Jordan would always used to say, it's a work in progress. We're working the kinks out. And every year, we've had different, different things that we've had to work out. We appreciate everyone's patience as we try to work through those normal human issues that every, two organizations working together have. And so I just, I just can't speak enough to the successes of working with different principals. I was hoping to say something to the principals right before we got up. I don't know what happened before you got up. My goodness. No, just kidding. But also, we were, actually, we were in every school except Ashley Chapel. And this year, Ashley Chapel asked us to come there too as well. So we're there now as well. So we're in every single school system in Richmond County schools at least once per month. And it looks like that's going to be growing into several schools twice per month and is continuing to grow. So I just wanted to share that with you because I thought it was good news, especially the ten thousand seat hour saved. And that, as an educator myself, that just warmed my heart a lot to say that that's gonna help somebody graduate from school and somebody be successful and likely save somebody's life, really. So.
Jason, speaking as a former principal, talking about the seat hours.
Yes, ma'am.
It's not just that. It's the actual leaving campus. It takes a while when they come back, if they come back. They, sometimes they wouldn't even come back when they had an off-campus appointment for any kind.
Correct.
So it really saves more than what you're saying. And I'm just saying that as a former principal. That is great that you can go on campus.
It's, it's a blessing to the student. It's a blessing to the teacher in the classroom because it's less movement and they're there, right? And so that, that attributes to better behavior and all those kinds of things in the classroom as well. So does anyone else have any questions for myself? While I have Ms. Fain here, she's the professional, so she can answer those questions for you.
Just want to thank you for the partnership.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for what you do and for our students.
Thank you. We're really humbled to be a part, and we look forward to more growth in the future. So thanks very much.
Thank you, Jason.
Angela, are you done?
Yes, sir.
Well, thank you and congratulations on your new position. And if you need us, let us know. Micro purchase threshold, Ms. Angel May. Micro purchase threshold, Ms. Angel May.
Good evening, Mr. Dorf. How are you? So this evening, we're gonna go ahead and get started. Um, and we apologize that the screen is not working. I did not make copies of this. I went to make copies of the, um, of the plan. But Dr. Farrell has a copy of, um, a request for, um, I just need approval tonight for the self-certification of an increased, uh, micro purchase threshold. So this is something I do believe, um, we did this last year.
It's every year.
Did we do this last year as well?
We do that.
Okay, so, um, I think around COVID time, we noticed, um, you've, you've noticed an increase in, uh, how much everything costs. Um, and there is that little ten thousand dollar price tag for everything. And so what this would, would do is we're asking, um, to increase that to thirty thousand dollars for, um, apparatus, uh, mati- supplies and materials, thirty thousand dollars for, um, let me get it. Look, I have these glasses and then I don't put them on. Uh, for construction and repair work and then fifty thousand dollars for services, um, not subject to competitive bidding. And this would help reduce us coming to the board for every little purchase. So if we would, uh, we are asking tonight for your approval so that we can get that done.
So I need a motion to increase in micro purchase threshold.
Make a motion.
Make a motion by Mr. Tillman, a second by Mr. Ethers. Is there any discussion on it?
Is that the same amount as last year?
It is.
Yes, yes, yes. All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? There you go, Angel.
All right, thank you so much.
All right, and Angel, you got a second thing, right?
Yes, I do. And so our second item is we are getting ready to do our consolidated application for federal funding. And I am, in the midst of that, I actually came in on two wheels from Throwan County. I've been at boot camp. Um, so if you call, they said they didn't wanna call it boot camp. They didn't wanna think that they were doing anything bad to us, but they really weren't. Um, so I've been learning about all things about federal funding today. Um, so the district, uh, prior to me arriving, you know, I've been here for three weeks now. Um, so much of this work was done before I got here. Um, but I just wanna tell you a little bit about what the plan is for Richmond County Schools for, um, the district plan for federal funding for the year. Oh, these glasses are terrible, y'all. Excuse me, I'm sorry, I really cannot see. I'm sorry, I apologize. All right, so, let's begin. Um, and let me give you a copy of it. I did make you copies because I know you cannot see it, so let me pass it.
She's helpful.
Always, always, always.
Yeah, I'm good, I'm good.
So I know you all have kept up with the news and we are so excited, excited that funds have been released and they are, uh, they are going to be coming down. And after meeting today, they said that they should come even faster this year, so, uh, like be released to us even faster this year. And, uh, so the faster we can get our application in, the faster they should drop. So that's what they said. We shall see. Um, anyway. Um, so let's go ahead and, um, let's get started with a little review of our timeline. So the district and schools conducted their, uh, comprehensive needs assessment back in the spring. That's something, um, the district does. The schools do that at the school level as well. And then from that, um, in the summer, there was a budget, budget, um, application. We'll, we'll, we'll be doing that, we're doing that now. Um, and then in the, um, fall, the schools and the districts will begin the communication and engagement with parents and community partners. So what does this look like with our federal programs? So Title One, those are our improving basic programs. And that includes our K-eight schools and Ashley Chapel Educational Centers. Then we have our Title Two Funds. Those are the funds that we use for supporting effective instruction. And those are used K-12. And we have our Title Three Funds. Those are used for English language acquisition funds and they're used for K-12. And then we have our Title Four. Those are used for student support and academic enrichment. And those are also used for K-12. So we're looking forward, and we're, um, looking forward to getting all these funds together so that we can support the students of Richmond County Schools. And like I said, we are working on our consolidated application, which is due at the end of August. Um, and so we'll get all the, um, information together, um, looking, pooling together some of our carryover funds, putting it together with our, um, anticipated funds that we will have for this year and put together our plan. So let's see what we have planned for this year. So if you go ahead and, um, let's look at what our comprehensive needs, um, assessment told us about last year. So the analysis of our comprehensive needs assessment told us, um, the commu- uh, the analysis was we had community and parent surveys and feedback. We had accountability data using the graduation rate, um, which as you said, you already, um, had stated, it was eighty-three point five percent. Um, we looked at EOG and EOC data, we looked at attendance data and discipline data. We also did school level surveys and school and district, um, software reviews. And so each year at the end of the year, um, schools are given, um, that's, I know as a principal, that was something we were asked to review, um, so to, to look at the use of things, rate it, is it worth paying the money for it? And so that's something that we do at the end of the years, at the year. So here are some pluses and deltas. So some pluses were that parents feel valued at our schools, parents note the importance of SEL in our schools. And I, I think that, um, we're doing a really good job of that at our schools. Um, can it be better? Absolutely, it can always be better. And I think Angel's got some really good things in place. Um, teachers and staff feel supported at our schools. And that's some of our title money that we use, looking at PD support for teachers. Parents feel STEM, it, STEM education is important. Parents feel graduation is important. Teachers feel professional development is aligned and purposeful. Software purchases are aligned and purposeful. That comes from that district soft, school and district software review. Um, the Evening Academy and cre- credit recovery are noted as success stories. So some deltas, additional ML support is needed. And you can see Title Three is one of those funds that is, is le- lesser funds, but we just, it's based on the number of students that you have and just having the funds for that. Um, attendance in general is noted as an ongoing concern and it's something schools and the district are working on. And mental health support is noted as an increased concern.
Angel, what's ML stand for?
Uh, that, uh, multilingual learners. And so that's EL, that, they do changes over the years. We talked about that today as a matter of fact. Um, is, you know, even in, uh, the fed- some federal funds, they still, they still list it as EL. So if you'll flip, um, uh, you may not be flipping, but it's the next slide. So we're gonna look at our Title One expenditures for the year. So our district Title One Schools only are, um, the, we're gonna be spending money on professional development. Um, we're spending money on pre-K, paying for two teachers, two TAs. We'll be paying for academic coaches, field trips, transportation, uh, a pre-K specialist, PD, uh, registration stipends. Um, we pay for a homeless liaison, um, which through Title One is something that is required, um, to have someone who, who serves as a person for that. We have a parent liaison. And we have foster student transportation. We have academic software and curriculum resources that sup- support the, um, programs that we use. But the majority of the funds are allocated out to the schools for the schools to, to use to support their programs, to supplement their work at their schools. Okay? And so that is all of our K-eight schools and Ashley Chapel School. Any questions?
Mr. Rongusley is, uh, the parent is on the same person?
No, they are not. They are two different people. And, um, one is Kim Childers is your, um, homeless liaison and Susanna Franco is your parent liaison.
And that percentage there stands for what?
Where's that?
Way under schools by rank order.
Oh, the, the schools by rank order? That's their poverty rates. Okay. And, uh, that is, that is pulled from our, um, our, uh, child nutrition department. It is, is who gives us that, that number based on poverty rankings from like during reduced lunch is, originally it would, it would go by what, what you used to know, similar to that. Okay? So school rank order, if you'll look at the school rank order there is listed. And those are the schools that will be served as Title One Schools. Okay? And so our Title One Schools, um, in some of our expenditures this year, you'll see some of our big items that we pay for. Teachers, instructional coaches, teacher assistants, professional development is a big thing for, for, um, teachers. As you can see, if we want to improve instruction, we've got to invest in our teachers. Um, and we are, um, dialing in to what do teachers need, what is very specific, because if we wanna make teachers better, we've got to get what they need. And so we're dialing into that. Computer devices and software, parent and family engagement is a big thing in our schools. Um, tutors, um, providing what students need, both during school hours and after school hours, and behavior and attendance. Any questions on that?
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry. I didn't raise, I didn't raise my hand. I'm just curious on the tutors. Do you have a percentage?
I do.
Of what she, what they use, what, do some schools?
Some schools do more than others, but based on where the availability of, of, of who's available to tutor. Um, so s- one school may have, you know, have, have somebody that can, can tutor and do it throughout the year. And then somebody can only get them for the spring. So it be, varies from school to school. I don't know, Dr. Smith, it, I, I, it, it. It, it really is, it's site-based. It's very site-based because it just availability of, of who, who's available to do it. And some people can do it after school, some can do it during school. It, it's just, it really is site-to-site. Um, there's just differences in, in availability of having people available to do it. And, and how much money you have left over too sometimes by the time you pay for things and, um, what the school decides to do. Because, you know, the school improvement team does meet together. They look at the needs of their school and sometimes you've got different needs. So, so because it's a school improvement decision and how you spend your money. Um, and so it, it, it may be a school-based decision that they decide to spend their money on, on other things. That also is a decision that's made there at the school as well.
Can I ask, what determines the amount of money each, how much money each school receives?
So those numbers over there on the side, those percentages. So, um, so there is, um, that percentage determines, and then there's a pu- per pupil, um, allotment. So we get so much money. And then we, um, then we, we get so much money, then we have, based on that percentage, that percentage, we have to divide it by how much per pupil. That, that number times the per pupil amount. Okay? Does that make, there's a formula for it. Okay, so there's eighty-six percent times the per pupil amount. So they get the most. Whoever's, whoever's at the top gets the most times the per pupil.
They get the most per pupil, but they don't get the most money because they had the fewest amount of students.
Yeah, I understand.
So, yeah, so, yeah, so.
Yeah.
Now, Monroe Avenue, who has what, four, were they four hundred kids, I think?
Yeah. But, but it's, but it's the poverty level.
Exactly.
Yeah, it's based on the poverty level, that, that, that percentage, not, not the number of kids total, but the number of poverty level.
So like Washington Street has how many kids? They have what, five hundred, six hundred kids?
No, not now. No, they're like four forty. Yeah. Yeah. So it's based on the poverty level and, and the rank level. Okay? So the, the one with the most gets the most. No, the, the, the per pupil's the same, but, but, but the percentage of, of it, it's, it's.
I'm a little confused, but.
Yeah, yeah. So, so they, they get the highest percentage of it. Okay?
Um, I was, I was looking at, at Ashley Chapel.
Uh-huh.
And so I'm thinking that Ashley Chapel is getting the, you created percentage of the Title One money.
But it's ti- it's ti- it was times that many kids. So, so however many kids are at that. At, so however many kids are at, however many poverty children, they get it times that, that many poverty children. So if there were, if there were like eighteen children that were considered children of poverty level, it's times that. Does that make sense? Okay, so if there were eighteen children considered poverty level, uh, if they were, um, one hundred out of, out of two hundred, then it's one hundred times that per pupil. Okay? All right. And Title Two expenditures. So, um, the purpose of these dollars is to build teacher effectiveness across our dis- district. And we allocate these funds in a variety of ways. So this year we are adding a behavior interventionist. And, um, this position is going to be split up, um, between Title Two and Title Four. Um, so we're excited to add that to support, um, teachers. Um, one of the areas that we've noted over, um, the last year is an increase in some, um, behavior issues in students. And so we have added that position to support teachers and students, um, to, um, in that, in that area. So we will be funding that position through two, two areas in Title Two and Title Four. Um, also in Title Two, we have, um, we are reducing class sizes by, um, purchasing for teachers. We have contracted services with new teacher training. Um, we also have principal and assistant principal evaluation training. We have mentors. Um, we have some contracted and teacher mentors. Um, we do education and tuition test reimbursements. We do, um, subs for professional development for teachers so that they can come, um, for some, some in-house, um, days in October. Um, so it's a nice time for them to do some half-day planning and then they get to come with their peers and their classes are covered. So that's another thing they do. And there's also recruitment software that is funded through that as well.
Beginning Teacher Director, is that still funded under this?
The, no, 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 no. Okay, and Title Three expenditures, this is, this is our little smallest pot. And this is, um, what we pay for ML tutor, um, ML PD supplies, PD and supplies, our parent and family engagement along with this and software that is used for the ML department. And then lastly, our Title Four expenditures, this is, um, our well-rounded education and student support. And so this is funds STEM education. And this year we are funding facilitators, supplies and materials, field trips, workshops and resources. And then in student support area, this was a big hit last year, is dropout prevention and SEL. Um, and this in- includes our student support specialist, um, social workers and workshops. And of course, we've got that behavior interventionist at fifty percent, which was gonna be the other fifty percent of that. And, um, it's well worth that dropout prevention, um, doing some wonderful things there. Any questions on that?
Under your, um, I'm just curious on your surveys, um, how did the, um, STEM education rank? You know, there for a couple of years, it was, that was whatever, what the parents.
I'm gonna be honest with you. I have, in, in my, in my three weeks, I, I have not, I have not reviewed it. Do, do you know?
Yeah, I understand it's, it's still.
It, uh, based on, based on the pluses from the beginning, it is, I, I know at my school, even on surveys that I, that whenever I was at, at Mineral Springs, when I did like in-house surveys, parents always requested, they're like, "We really like STEM." We re- we tried to put STEM in everything because the parents, they came for that. They, they were like, "We like to do STEM." And that, that was the thing that got parents out. They liked it because it's interactive and they could do things. And I think that they felt, um, what's the word? It's like took the risk out. It gave them something to do with their child. Um, so it was a, a really interactive way for them to get, uh, with their child.
That's what the children go home and tell their mommas and daddies what they did today.
Yeah.
They'll tell them about the STEM.
Uh-huh. And, and then, and then when they come to school, they, they really like that. Um, and they, they like to be a part of it when, when they see it, they enjoy it too. So tonight, if there are no other questions, I am asking the board if they would authorize Dr. Farrell, uh, Superintendent, to act as the representative to fi- to file the consolidated application for these funds at the end of the month, whenever we are ready to submit.
So we need a motion for the federal programs plan, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Is that, is that, you need a motion for the?
I'll make a motion.
A motion by Ms. Ornsby?
Second.
Second by Mr. Baldwin. Any discussion? All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Ms. May, you've got your plan.
I appreciate your time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Welcome to Central Office.
Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, can I ask?
Yeah.
And this may be, um, I probably should have asked this in discussion. Is there any way that we can kinda ke- keep a track of? I, I'm more concerned like we talked about the attendance, um, was a concern, um, ongoing concern. So I would like to see like, from year to year, has there been an improvement in the, in the attendance? And, um, 'cause to me that'd kinda help us as a board kinda see what that looks like. And then kinda look at what interventions on top of what we're already doing, if we need to do anything else. Because again, we know if a child is not at school, they can't learn, you know? So I, I would be interested in kinda knowing, I like to look at that data from year to year, what that looks like.
It's easy to get K-eight data.
Yeah.
Nine twelve's a little different because they do it period, period attendance. But yeah, they can get you.
Yeah.
We can get that.
But that would be good, especially, you know, we can catch them, catch it early when they're younger and address it. Then I think long-term that's gonna even be bigger for us as a result.
Kids that are not coming to school, kindergarten, first graders, those are our dropouts and those are our concerns.
Yeah.
Yep. Good point. Yep, good point. Contracts for EC and curriculum, Ms. Jordan.
Good evening, Chairman Satterfield, members of the board, Dr. Farrell. Dana and I are coming before you with, um, have I think nine contracts before you on board docs? Um, eight of them are EC. Um, the first one is AMN Healthcare, um, contract number one for a hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars. Um, contract number two is dysphasia and voice therapeutics. Um, that contract is four hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars. Uh, contract number three is Amanda Hill, that's for a hundred and two thousand dollars. Contract four, Envision Services for seventy thousand dollars. Contract number five, Sprouting with Spots, that one's a hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars. Contract number six is Speech Therapy of the Sandhills for two hundred and seventy thousand, five hundred dollars. Contract number seven is Stepping Stones Group for a hundred and ninety-nine thousand dollars. Contract eight is Margie Zastro for a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Those are all of the EC contracts. Contract nine is Let's Go Learn Through Curriculum and that was for fifty-nine thousand dollars.
So the dysphia contract, is that, did I say that right?
Which, dysphasia?
Dysphasia.
Mm-hmm.
That's over a hundred thousand dollars more this year, right?
Yes.
If I looked at it correctly.
Three twenty-three, four twenty-four.
Yeah.
And the reasoning behind that is with Sandhills Children's Center closing and we're taking those kids on. I have, um, put out requests to see who could help pick up the related services. And Tamara's company has provided a therapist to do that.
Right, okay.
Sir, can I ask a question?
Yeah.
I didn't know who I was talking to. Um, so Dana, the, are most of our speech therapists contracted now? We don't have many that are our employees still.
Two that are ours, we only have two.
Two. But we have to contract how many, cause I noticed several, last night there were, a lot of this was for speech therapists. And then OT and PT, so are they all contracted or do we have, we have one?
We have one OT, um, and two CODAs, um, that are ours, which are the assistants. And then I have, um, two speech therapists that are ours, and I have the rest are contracted.
And they, contracts get you, they get you. How about the, uh, step, the stepping stone group, that's well over a hundred thousand dollars additional.
It is, and that is because of a school psychologist, we lost a school psychologist, she resigned. Um, and so currently, the only thing I can find is a contract one to help support us.
Yeah.
Um, and so we just want to give this a chance to see.
Yeah.
Um, Dawn and I had discussed what that would look like and for some reason it doesn't work out, um, but we're, we're still, it's still posted.
Right.
Hopefully someone will come, our speech are still posted, our OT is still posted. Um, my speech therapist and OT that we do have are actively searching in their groups, um, from schools that they graduated from. Um, I know that when Delium went last year, she was actively searching for therapists and things to come, just not graduating.
Can we get out of these con- if we find somebody, can we get out of these contracts?
Yes.
Okay.
There's a thirty-day clause in it that either party can terminate the contract.
Yeah, it's okay. So you had to do some finagulin with your budget this year, did you?
Yes, sir. And we, we made a pretty good dent, um.
Absolutely.
At the end of the year, last year, seven hundred thousand.
Yes.
Um, unfortunately.
You know, until, until there's, until we figure out a way how public education can pay speech pathologist and occupational therapist and school psychs more money, they're, they're only, they're gonna go out in contract. They'd be crazy not to do that, you know, so.
Yeah, that's not happening just here, that's.
No, it's everywhere.
Not everywhere.
I don't know if the effectiveness of these individuals are under these contracts. You know, you, you say any way to determine, you know, if we got a contract with a company. But I don't know that the person that they are sending are, uh, six-three, are detectives.
So we interview them personally ourselves, they have to do background checks and everything through us. Most of the contracts that we have now are ones that we've had for several years. Um, so they have.
Those, those individuals?
Yes, yes, sir, yes, sir. Um, the only ones that would be needed this year is our, is our school, excuse me, our school psychologist that's coming on. Um, and that was the one that Dawn and I made sure the contract says that there's a thirty-day, um, termination agreement. And then, um, we have two OTs that are coming back for AMM, but they came last year and they did a fantastic job. They're travel OTs, they asked to return all of the schools, the principals and the teachers. I, um, reached out to them to see, you know, what do you think, how did they do this year? Did you feel like they were on top of things, what about working with the kids and got really great feedback? So I was happy that they were returning, so we're not starting over again. Like Margie's been here since I taught special ed, is Maple still working?
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions? So do we have to approve all these or do we have to eight and one separate, or are they all EC, because one's not EC, right?
It, you can make one motion to approve them all. Um, I do wanna say, I think in the future, the actual contracts should be here for the board to see. Um.
I would put them on the, okay.
Um.
We can get them copies, I have them all right here.
I mean, if you would like to see them, but just generally for the questions that you had, it would be good to be able to see the contract.
Yeah, they can put them on board docs, that'd be great.
Yeah.
Yeah. I type up what she puts on them.
Yeah.
Right in there, that's, that's, but yes, there, we, uh, we do make sure they sign our contracts, we don't sign their contracts. They have to sign our contracts.
So Eva, what we have right now, which we've posed like contract number seven for the stepping stones, I know that's, that's what I'm gonna sign evidently. But that's not the contract, right, we have to have the official contract.
No, you'll.
He doesn't sign the contract, he signs the approval.
The approval.
Mm-hmm.
And then who signs the contract?
I do.
And that's okay, because you're authorizing them to sign by approving it.
Right.
Um.
But we should see the contracts.
Right, just put it on board docs, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that's my fault, I think I.
But in response to your question about can you approve them in one motion, the answer is yes.
Okay. So you're looking for a motion to approve all nine, all nine contracts?
All nine contracts.
I make a motion that we approve all nine contracts, as presented.
I have a motion by Mr. Tillman, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Orsby, is there any further discussion? All in favor by saying aye?
Uh.
All opposed? Thank you.
And I just have a, um, little update to give you, um, budget-wise. Um, I just wanted to let you know, um, our auditors are almost complete with our twenty-four, twenty-five audit. Dale will let me know when he's done and he'll come to our board meeting and present that. Um, but just to update you, the district did use one point two million in fund balance to balance the budget. Um, we have one point six million remaining in fund balance. I also wanted to let you know that, um, for the twenty-five, twenty-six, since I have not been able to bring the budget yet, that the county did. Our twenty-five, twenty-six request to the county was for one point three million dollars. Um, that request included the five percent teacher supplement increase, the three percent local payroll increase, a two per, three percent fixed asset, fixed cost increase, that's for utilities, insurance, supplies, materials and fuel. Um, and implementation of the third phase of our salary study. The county, uh, gave the district an increase of six hundred and forty-four, two ninety-two. This increase included all of the request, but the implementation of the salary study for teacher assistance. They did ask, it was such a large request, they did ask, could we, you know, have that?
Over, over four years.
That was pretty much half of it.
Mm-hmm.
The teacher assistants themselves, if we'd got a three percent pay increase to do all of them for the salary study, would have been almost seven hundred thousand dollars. So, um, now in order to get the teacher assistance, the board would need to, um, approve a fourth phase. You know, we'd said we were gonna do it in three phases. Um, the board would need to approve the fourth phase of the, um, salary study, um, so that we can make a request to the county for the twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven school year.
So does everybody understand that? Okay, best, you, you weren't here when the salary study first came in, we were gonna do it over three years.
Yeah.
But it's a, it's a lo- the third year's a large sum, so the county considers that.
I get that, but what choice do we have?
We don't.
Every district. We don't, because we don't have the money and we've already gone into fund balance, a million dollars already.
Right. There you go. There you go.
Every district that I had talked to that previously had done it, teacher assistants were their last because it was their largest.
Right. So we need a motion to go to a fourth year for our salary study.
I make a motion that we go.
Yep, Mr. Tillman.
My second.
As a motion, first motion, Ms. Shiller second.
I mean, we want them to get it.
Yep. Any discussion? All in favor by saying aye?
Uh.
All opposed? Dawn, can I ask one question?
Yes.
So, one point six million, it's get, it's getting, it's getting low. So if you recall, a couple of years ago, we gave principals, central office staff that supplement, that the state.
Yes.
And the county said after the first year, they would pick that up.
They did.
And so that is still picked up?
They have, we picked it up that first year.
Right.
And they have kept it going, they gave it to us the next year, we put it in the request and that is in there. So everything they're giving us is on top of that.
So do we have any money out there that is just reoccurring from our general fund for year to year? That's a, that's a very large question, I know that. But do we have a lot of, we have a lot, so we need to figure that out because we.
Well, Dr. Farrell's been working on that.
Okay, so I'm, I'm.
So Dawn and I had a co- a rich discussion before we came in here tonight and we decided that maybe, I feel like more might be more. So he, so, so Dawn and I are gonna tag-team a little story here, how about that? So last year, when our auditors, um, said that we had used nine hundred thousand dollars in fund balance. Um, I took my million-dollar challenge out on the road, right? I went out and shared all this information in our schools, made sure everyone was educated about what a fund balance is, why we're spending a million dollars out of it and how we had to stop spending that million dollars.
And you've made so many improvements, that's why that number shot.
We, so we made cut after cut after cut after cut. And then health insurance went up and, you know, all these other things happened, right? And so one of the things that, um, we have now done is, and Dawn helped me see this today because I was in a little bit of a panic about it. But, and I said, Dawn, we've reduced, you know, we didn't fill a child nutrition position and we didn't fill Wendy Jordan's position, well, we filled it with Angela Gallagher, but then we didn't fill Angela's position and we reduced a bookkeeper and a data manager and a custodians and all the, and I started listing all these positions. We went back to the state, um, allotment for teacher assistance and, which was a significant cut in teacher assistance. And we reduced, you know, we took our schools, particularly our middle schools, back to what the state allot's for teachers. Because as I, we've talked about before, if the money's not there in a state fund, it's gonna funnel down and have to be paid out of local. If we don't have local, it's gonna come out of fund balance, right? And so I said, Dawn, how can we cut three pages of positions and still spend a million dollars out of our fund balance? And, um, and she said.
Those cuts are not effective until this year.
Yes.
They're cuts they've made, but we're not going to see anything because they're effective with the twenty-five, twenty-six.
Yeah, and so we didn't.
So we, we were already, we're going in the direction that we want to go in.
Yeah.
Um, so it's just, you know, we won't see the results of that, you know, until the end of this year.
So in a, in a perfect world where all the stars align, our auditor next year says, look at you, you added two hundred thousand dollars to fund balance or three hundred thousand dollars to fund balance, and I realize that I'm dreaming a little bit, Dawn, but it, but if we gotta bring it down to where we're actually not spending a million dollars a year out of our fund balance.
Remember when we used nine hundred last year, I still had Esser that filled me out a lot.
Yeah.
I, Esser's gone.
And it was way higher, so it would have been, minus Esser, we would have had to use a lot more out of fund balance. So that helped to me feel better that maybe some of the cuts we made actually did help. And now the more significant cuts we've made will actually help more for the current school year twenty-five, twenty-six.
What's the amount that they told us we had to maintain in fund balance?
I don't think we have, um, anything, we don't have anything that we have, some districts have to.
I thought the auditors told us last year that we had to be in certain amount, yeah.
They, they have a threshold, they like, every, it's different everywhere, some districts, their county doesn't want them to add any. I can't remember what Dale actually said, um.
I think it's, there's a sort of informal rule of thumb of eight percent, which is like one month's expenses. But it's not in law anymore, it's just an accountant's rule of thumb.
So I'm gonna scan this document back into, um, back into your weekly update. But what I'd like to do, before I do that, because you've seen this document before.
Right.
But what I'd like to do is sit down with Dawn, so it might not go in this week's update, but sometime over the next couple of weeks, I'd like to put this document in with some dollar figures with it so that you can see, you know, that we've, you know, if we've cut two million dollars in positions and we're still, you know, hopefully that's moving us more toward where we need to be. But we'll, um, and that was just a number that I just pulled out of the air, but we will, um, put some dollar figures on this. Make sure that's in the, um, weekly update for you all to, um, to see. Because my, your reaction was the same as mine, I was like, what? You know, with, you, you know, because you just make cuts and make cuts and make cuts and then.
Yeah, I mean, we, we made cuts and we, we've done those over the years, but when your utilities continue to go up, you know, your insurance. Our insurance has increased over two hundred thousand dollars last year.
Yeah.
And that was a big chunk, it's over ninety this year. So when you get those type of increases, it doesn't take much to eat up the cuts you've made. And hospitalizations going up four hundred dollars per person this year. So that's huge.
Question, do you think we need to have like, this could be a work session to kind of talk about this? Uh, I guess we'll talk a little bit more about it and ask questions and, you know, I guess for me, cause I would like to know like, well, you've already kind of talked already where a lot of the big expenses are coming from, healthcare and things like that. But I would like to kind of see where, look at the, see where all of our big expenses are coming from as a school district. On that's affecting, uh, the fund balance, so that we can kind of see how we're addressing or gonna address.
So maybe what we do is Dawn and I will work to put that together for you all, give it to you, let you start to just kind of process it a little bit. And then if we need to pull it into a work session, absolutely, um.
And we covered some of that at the, when Dale does the audit thing.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, it's usually, that's kind of a, a high level, um, and not getting too much into weeds. But, um, I think it would be important for you all to see the reductions we've made and what that equates to as far as dollars and cents. And then maybe some of those big ticket items, like, you know, this is what you ti- this is how much utilities have gone up. And put real numbers with those so that you all can, can see some of that. Um, and we have also, the one thing we, we haven't mentioned is, you know, we've also, during COVID or right after COVID, I guess the state kind of said, we're not gonna, we're gonna hold you harmless where your funding sources are concerned based on your enrollment. And then if your enrollment, you know, went down and now they've, they've held, they've taken away the hold harmless. So we now have, you know, some areas where we're getting less funding. So when all of that math happens and, um, you know, you make the reductions, but then the, the, you know, the costs go up and then the fund, and then the, um, the funding amounts go down, it's just, it's, it's been problematic. But we've made, I believe that we have made cuts for. But we've made, I believe that we have made cuts for this current school year that are significant enough that we could be in a much different place next year at this time. Fingers crossed.
Have we, uh, as far as athletic travel expense on schools, sorry, athletic travel. Have we thought of a solution to the enormous amount of money that, like, Richmond has to spend? But I'm, I'm, I'm having trouble understanding the form of that thing. Um, I think I saw that they were charging like three dollars per mile or something. Whereas, I'm trying to figure out why are we charging per mile?
It's gonna take a work.
A gallon. It's cheaper.
Yeah.
So if a gallon of diesel is three dollars and forty cents, I can travel forty miles on that three dollars and forty cents. Why am I paying three dollars per mile when it's cheaper to pay per gallon? And, and I just don't understand why schools have been charged that way. And why they're not being charged per gallon instead of per mile? The same thing applies to field trips.
Yeah.
You know, because it's killing, killing schools' athletic funds just on travel. And why is it that we're not charging them per gallon as opposed of per mile?
That does come from the transportation department. But there's more than just the ga, the gas that goes into using those athletic buses. You cannot use state funds to pay for that mechanic to work on that, um, bus. You have to pay local funds. So if he uses a mechanic, any parts he puts on those, um, activity buses cannot be used with state funds. So he's got to use local funds. He has to pay the state back a certain percentage. There's reports he has to do to pay the state back if you use state money for the parts and the labor.
Okay, what about gas?
But it's an activity bus too. So there's a total of the whole thing. Because if that activity bus is not running, doesn't matter how much gas you put in it.
Yeah, I think that they think of it as fu, a fuel cost. But it's actually so much more than that, all the things that don't.
But they lowered that, didn't they?
But the short, but the short answer to your question is yes, we have significantly reduced that. Um, so, I mean, significantly reduced that. I don't have an exact amount. But Benji, Julian, Dawn, all of us sat down together and we, we significantly reduced that. Now, we did, some school districts pay it completely and they don't charge anything to the high schools. Um, we, um, we came up with them having some skin in the game, so to speak. And so they do pay some, but it is, it's significantly reduced. And I can get you some actual figures on that, but it's, it's way less than it was before. Yeah.
Thanks, Dawn. Guys, we're gonna need to take like a five minute break. Sorry, Steve. We need to take a five minute break.
So tonight I have two contracts for your consideration and approval. First being, and these are in, in board docs. Uh, the, I'm not sure, how, what order they're in, in board docs.
Track is fir, track is first.
Track is first. Okay. Rich McSenior High running track renovation. So we've worked with Dewberry Engineering over the last probably almost a year now, I guess. Developing a replacement plan to replace the running track at the high school. Put it out for bid. We negotiated the bid. Actually, when bids come in, originally they were in the seven, eight hundred thousand dollar range. So we got that down to just under four hundred thousand. We asked the county for that funding. County approved that. We haven't received that funding. Uh, so now we're, we have a contract with Geo Surfaces. I think they're out of Raleigh to do the work. So we're seeking board approval for a contract with Geo Surfaces and Rich County Schools in the amount of three, three hundred ninety-six thousand sixteen dollars.
Can I ask a question, Stephen? Just so, so we know in case people ask us. So you're not taking, are you taking the entire track down to the, to the asphalt or are you just repairing it?
They will actually remove the rubber surface.
Right.
They're actually bringing an asphalt milling machine in and they'll cut the, just like they mill the roads. They'll grind an inch and a half down. They'll replace that with an inch and a half of new asphalt. That asphalt has to cure for twenty-eight days and then they'll apply the new rubber surface and then paint it. And the reason they have to mill that asphalt is to get the warranty, apparently, for the, the running surface, the rubber surface.
So you're gonna do this during football season?
Yes, sir. To answer your question, yes, sir. We had several meetings to work out all the logistics. The actual removal of the running surface, the milling and the, and the asphalt paving should only take two weeks. So there was a window of time there that we had, we had to relocate or they're gonna do something when one JV gained. So we minimized that. Then we'll have the twenty-eight day period. And then the paving, I mean, the, the, applying the rubber surface will take a week or less. And then the painting is just a couple of days. So, you know, we, we looked at all different scenarios, trying to push it out, you know, to December. Well, that don't work because of temperature, you know, for asphalt paving and the rubber and the painting. Uh, we looked at trying to defer the contract till next, next year in June or so. Company was reluctant to do that, you know, they don't know what the prices are gonna be of materials next year. Uh, and, and given that, you know, we did receive two bids in the seven, eight hundred thousand dollar range. We didn't want to have to rebid it next year. We may be at nine hundred thousand next year.
This is a great price. I've never, I've, I've done three tracks and nothing even close to this.
It is. So to answer your question, we are doing it during football season. Actual substantial completion is in a contract of twelve seventeen. Uh, final, final completion of, uh, the first of Jan, uh, twelfth of January, I'm sorry. So we did work with Athletic Department to make sure that, you know, we could get, get this done within that window of time and before it got too cold. And, and to go ahead and move forward this project.
So we need a motion to approve the con, the contract for the track.
Quick question.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Go ahead.
No, you can go ahead. I'll just get into discussion.
You'll ask, you'll ask a question. You got, Mr. Ball made the motion, a second? Second by Mr. Mason, discussion.
What was the total amount on that again?
Three hundred ninety-six thousand sixteen dollars.
Okay, thank you. And the county is paying?
No, we need to be, but we need to be clear about that. That is coming from sales tax money that belongs to the school system that the county controls.
I got you.
Yes.
Got you. Any other questions? Do you have a motion? Mr. Ball, one second by Mr. Mason. Uh, all in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? That passes.
All right. The second contract is for the Rich McSenior High baseball field renovation. Um, again, the same engineering firm, Dewberry, we started about the same time as the track. Uh, put this out for bid. Uh, this, this total contract is, uh, will be nine hundred seventy-six thousand, seven hundred twenty-eight dollars. And again, it comes from the same funding of the county, the, the school, the sales tax money that we have that they actually control. And just, just to give you an, an, an idea, there was about three million, more over three million dollars in that fund. Before we received any of these funds in that fund balance.
So, just like the track, Stephen, can you kind of just walk us through real quickly? Are they gonna tear the whole field up, down?
Yes, sir. When we first started this project, uh, working with engineers, we were just gonna do the outfield. And then working with the baseball coach, athletic director, like, well, we've got some drainage issues on the infield, the infield part. And just going kind of back and forth and around and around. And we just, you know, we, we looked at some ways to, to economize. Because originally, we were thinking probably in the four hundred, four hundred fifty thousand dollar range. Well, we doubled the scope of work, put it back out for bid and now that's where we're, where we're at. So in, long story short, anything inside the fence, all the grass will be removed, all the sod will be removed. They'll remove, um, I think it's six inches of, of soil. They'll dispose of that. All the irrigation will come out. They'll install four inch corrugated drain pipes. They're like fingers, just all over the whole field. And they come into another collector pipe that go out the back and down the hill. Uh, all new irrigation lines, you know, that's one where we were trying to think, well, can we save what we have? And we were like, well, hate to tear up everything, put down new sod and then start harming all these irrigation leaks. So to answer your question, it, it'll, it'll be almost like building a brand new field, except the, the fence and the dugout.
Can we save the, the sprinkler heads? Can we save them for, for y'all?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, we could certainly.
It's just a savings cost somewhere. There's tons of them out there.
Yes, sir.
And they're, they're still great. I think we should dig those things. I know when we did Pine Crest's field when I was at Moore County, we took all the sprinkler heads off the field before they went to artificial turf. It's just, it's just a savings to the school system if we need another sprinkler head somewhere.
That's true. Yes, sir.
Stephen, you mentioned about the, uh, disposal of the, I guess, the soil. So how does that work? I mean, help me understand how that work, I mean, you say disposal of the soil. Is that, I guess I'm asking, is that something that senses, that we can get reimbursed some, you know, some kind of money on the soil?
Well, that's, so anytime you disturb more than one acre of, you're doing a construction project, you have to apply for a deener permit. And you have to submit erosion control and, and all this stuff, silt fencing and all this. So in the contract, I mean, the contractor figured, okay, well, we, we have to bring a machine in there. We have to cut the six inches off. We have to load it on trucks. We have to haul it off. So there's a cost involved in that. So, you know, now what they do with that, that soil that, that leaves here, you know, that, that's kind of what they figure in. But I, I don't know that there would be any, any way we could ask for a savings for them to haul their dirt off. Because in turn, they're gonna bring more, that same volume of dirt back in. So there's just a lot of transport with that.
The only thing we could save, I've talked, somebody talked, Dr. Farrell, they, we could save the grass and move it somewhere else, but that's probably another cost.
Yeah, I mean, you'd have to bring a sod cutter in and, and put it in rolls and, yeah, I mean, I. If, if you were building another field somewhere, maybe, but by the time you, because we even asked about, well, can we reuse the sod? But it's, it's got a short shelf life. Once you pull it up, it, it has to go back down in a certain amount of time.
You gotta, you gotta do something with it.
Yeah, trust me, we, we would, we explored all scenarios and, you know, I've learned a lot about athletic fields myself in the last year.
Now, is this guaranteed? Now, let's say six months comes, we get some torrential rain, it's, the field's still wet after they do it. So is it?
Yeah, there was, uh, I actually read through it, believe it or not. It's about a hundred and sixty-seven page project manager, manual. And it addresses all, I mean, you know, what if, what if the grass they put out gets a disease, dies or, you know, just a, a number of things. So to, to answer your, your short answer is, yes, that, that would be covered.
Okay.
You know, we, we told them, look, our field is in good shape now, other than the drainage. So that's what we expect in the end. You know, a year from now, we want it to look, you know, as good, if not better than what we have now, obviously, and drain and, you know, perform better.
I know they're gonna use, do they, do they specify what type of Bermuda they would use?
We did, yes, sir. The athletic director and ba, uh, baseball coach.
Okay, so all this, yeah.
I was gonna ask. They've been involved in this, you said, the whole time. I thought you did.
Oh, yes, yes, ma'am.
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
Stephen, between the two projects, there was twenty-five thousand in contingency on the track and I think fifty thousand on the baseball field. Is that covered from the same funds from the county too?
It is in the total contract amount and if we do not use it, you know, we, we would get that back.
Okay, it'll still go, it'll just go right back in the sales, the, the, your sales tax money. Yep.
And did I understand you to say that we got bids on these last year? But then, as y'all talked with the engineers, it, the project doubled or?
Well, it was, it was actually this year we got the bid, so. Well, it was, it was actually this year we got the bid, so, well, I don't think it ever even went out to bid.
No, it didn't.
With the first scope of work. When we were working through that, you know, when we had the baseball coach involved and athletic director, they're like, well, you know, it, it was our understanding originally that it was an outfield project. And that is where the majority of it is, but we said, well, if we're gonna fix the field, we need to fix the field one time and be done.
But discover the work from?
That's correct.
Okay.
And they're gonna start this immediately as well?
Um, yes, sir.
I'm trying to, I'm trying to look for the date, I can't find it.
Yes, sir, I, um, the notice to proceed is actually the thirteenth, so they'll be notified if this contract's approved, they'll be notified, or sent a letter that that's their notice to proceed date, which starts their contract time. So, the substantial completion on this project is actually November fifth, the final completion the nineteenth. So, they'll, it's a pretty big company, the Motts group, you know, they'll, they'll come in and they'll, there'll be a lot of activity out there for the next couple of months.
Can we put a time-lapse camera out there? That'd be cool to see.
It would, yeah.
It would be.
That would be a time-lapse, mhm.
But so, this price is the best price of three bids that we've got?
Actually, we only received one bid. We put it, we put it out for bid and only received one bid, we could not open that bid because of the rules. We rebid it and we still only had the one company to, to bid it. Now, and I think that's a lot of reason, because we're in a rural area, these big companies, the company that's doing this have done several professional fields, I mean, they're, they're a big-time company and it's just a niche market, I don't think there's a lot of companies that do this and can, can do it in a contract time and, you know, just that scope of work.
But this is the company that the engineers were from?
Um, no, the Motts company who is, will be doing the work, they're, they're, they're a company that bid through the, through the engineering company.
Thank you.
Any more questions? So, we need a motion to approve the baseball field improve, sewage, I guess what, the?
Drainage.
Drainage improvements.
Uh, repair, field repair renovation.
Need a motion.
I make a motion.
Have a motion by Ms. Orange, be a second by Mr. Etheridge, any further discussion? All in favor by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? We got it.
Thank you. All right, moving into some of the construction updates, so, just giving you an update on the high school project. We did receive the CO for the building this past Friday on the eighth. So, I mean, that actually, the TCO a few weeks ago actually just allowed us to move furniture in, we couldn't occupy the building or anything, but now we can actually occupy the building. Meter continuing to work on the punch list items. By the way, the building dedication is this Friday, the fifteenth, at nine o'clock, so if you can attend that. But, I, I think Mr. Etheridge was out there Monday, I think I saw him, he was walking around looking at it. Most all the furniture, you know, has been moved in. I would say ninety, ninety-five percent of the classes actually have already been set up. Teachers, from what I understand, typically, high school teachers don't come back till their required workdays, but they're actually, started this Monday and they're, you know, they knew they had a lot to do. And so, they're in there setting up rooms and getting those taken care of. There are several things that we're gonna have to remove from there that they either didn't need or, you know, items were damaged, we had better things at ninth grade academy. So, we're gonna try to get tho-, all those items cleaned up and moved out before the dedication on, on Friday, if the weather permits. You know, we've probably, I would say probably since this time last year, had a team of, of people, you know, it was ninth grade academy, transition to the high school, I mean, it was all, all the directors were involved and, I mean, we looked at parking, traffic patterns, you know, food preparation and additional lunch periods, security check, checkpoints, you know, do we have enough lockers? All the technology things, so, I mean, there, there's been a lot of effort over the last year to go into making this transition successful, and I think we're in a good place. Any questions on that?
The courtyard looked really good.
Yeah, once everything's clean, yeah, it is, yeah, I agree. Any other questions? All right, so I just want to give you a quick update with the Mosley project, the LJ Bell replacement, where we're at on that. The application has still not come out, it's typically out in July, but Ashley with Mosley, I talked to her last week and she said she'd check, and it still hasn't come out yet. But, it still should be due sometime late September, October, but Ashley said she felt like we're in a good, good place as far as working on the design and, you know, they're starting to work on the application process. We did have a work session on Monday, the twenty-eighth, and Tuesday, the twenty-ninth with Mosley, I think I mentioned that to you last time. So, we, we had a team of people from the district to meet with architects on Monday morning, and they, they basically asked us some questions, they had some, some boards up and it was like a brainstorming thing, and we're trying to, you know, see what kind of style of school we want, just a number of things. And they broke us into small groups. They actually had, like, the media center and the cafeteria drawn to scale in little pieces and we placed them on, on the thing and we're moving them around. We had one team, we're doing a design, okay, if we're gonna leave students on campus, we have to build a, a building beside what's there or whatever. We have one team working on that, we had another team working on if we just demo the site, relocate the students, so, we came up with a couple of different scenarios. So, that, that Monday afternoon, Mosley took and stayed here in town and worked on it, worked on it Tuesday morning. We met back as a group Tuesday afternoon and they presented four options to us. So, it was based on, you know, just different scenarios, different floor plans, different layouts. So, Mosley will actually take those options, those four options that we discussed and talked about and probably add two more options. So, there may be as many as six options that we, that Mosley will present to the board on the twenty-sixth of the work session. And, and so, there will be optional floor plans and site configurations. And then, we'll, the board have to select one of those to, to go along with the grant application.
Stephen, if everything, and I know it's not going to, because it, it never can, if everything were to go absolutely perfect, as far as the design phase, the grant application process, everything comes back perfect, what are you thinking of reasonable expectation for a date would be for a shovel to hit dirt there?
Mosley told us, was it eight to ten months in, in design? I'd have to look at a calendar, I'm not good with that, trying to project forward. And then probably two years in construction. So, whatever, I mean, that's basically like three years, you know.
But I'm talking about just actually start the construction process, when?
Um, yeah, I would think within a year.
Okay.
I think.
So, my question is, what happens if, if we do decide to move the students off campus and build it on the footprint it's at, are we gonna move them mid-year?
No, I, I, I mean, I can't answer that, I would think if you could defer it, I mean, if we're, if we're a year out, that puts us almost to August, you know, and, and eight to ten months for the design, I mean, we're like, well, I guess, I guess it depends on when the application's approved.
So, typically, the application is approved in late fall.
Between November, November, early December.
Mhm.
And then you got eight to ten months from there, because we have, then what, well, first of all, we have to pick an architect, you know, because we haven't done that, even Mosley's helping us, but we haven't chosen them.
That's right.
What?
That's right.
So, we have to pick then, that's gonna take a couple of months, choose that, and then from that, their plan, eight to ten months from there, so you're looking maybe, starting maybe January, February, and then another eight, ten months, so you're looking at the following year.
Yeah. I, I'm not sure what the stip-
This time next year.
I'm not sure what the stipulations are on spending the money once you're awarded the grant, so I would think that we could just.
Very few, I mean, as far as time is concerned.
Right, so I would think that we could just do whatever makes sense for us. I mean, get the grant, retain an architect, go through the design phase, get permits, you know, just gotta go out for bid for the work and then just see where that lands and then just say, you know, what makes sense, you know, deferring that to the next school year.
Right.
Because ideally, we would need to move over a summer.
Well, and my only concern in that is construction costs increasing and then, you know, there's just a lot of moving parts in this, so I'm trying to be ready for anything mentally, I guess.
I guess my initial, without really thinking through it, thought would be, if we get the grant, say, this December of twenty-five, then, and we're gonna be, we would be ready for construction by November-ish, December-ish of twenty-six. If we decide, if the, if the decision is to move the students off campus, I would say we probably need to, we could go ahead, we could go ahead and plan to do that next summer. And the building would just be empty for a short period of time while we finalize the plans to start construction, rather than wait six or eight more months, for that very reason. The cost of construction increasing would be, I think, what my recommendation would be.
Yeah, and also keep in mind, and we, we do have to do some renovations at ninth grade academy to make that school ready for an elementary, so we do need time for that.
Yeah.
Not trying to throw wrench into gears, just trying to think about it from every angle.
Yeah, the, the rising construction cost definitely has to be on our minds during this thing, yeah.
Do I have, just, is there any other questions on that? Just a couple of other quick, quick updates. So, you've probably noticed we're finishing up some painting, exterior, athletic stuff at the high school. I mean, practice field, softball, baseball, soccer, I mean, every, everything is, if it's got green and gold on it outside, it's getting painted. We got the new video board installed, you know, working through the training and all of that. That should be online now. The band concession stand, we're doing some, helping with some renovations in there. They never had air conditioning in there, so we installed air conditioning. So, that should help with, actually, it wasn't as much for the, the people working there, the equipment that they have in there, the compressors for all the coolers and freezers and drinking machines, they would overheat when we weren't there. Like, if they go in on Wednesday or Thursday and stock all these machines and close it up and it couldn't get air, those compressors would put off so much heat. If the machines couldn't cool the food enough and the health department come in and say, you can't use this food. So, we decided to, to spend some money and put air conditioning in there for them, so, you know, they, they don't have a problem with the health department keeping food cool. New playground is scheduled to go in on the eighteenth at Mental Springs, we've got the site ready for them there. And just all the things that we do for the building preparations for, you know, a new year school, all the testing of fire alarm systems and lighting and, you know, backflow preventers and, we met with principals and, you know, a lot of these buildings and facilities, sinks, whatever, don't get used all summer, we run all the water before everybody comes back, flush out all the lines, do all the playgrounds, do all the things. And finally, we are upgrading the technology in the boardrooms, it was a good night to bring that to us. It's been a need for some time, so we're, we're, we have a plan in place to, to do that. Hopefully, we're gonna do a little bit of painting and then install some new technology. I'm not sure, don't have a, a start date on that yet, but we should complete that in the next, I'd say, three months. Any questions on anything?
Thanks for all you're doing, Steve.
You're welcome, thank you.
Mr. Ingram. Policies for approval.
Chairman Satterfield, Dr. Pharoah, members of the board. I'd like to start off by sharing some information about the bail-to-bail no, no cell law. There's some key provisions in this law, requires local boards of education to adopt a wireless communication policy regulating student use of devices during instructional time. It defines wireless communication devices. Policies must prohibit use and display of devices during instructional time with the exception of educational use authorized by a teacher, emergencies, use required by an IEP or section five oh four plan, healthcare management for documented medical conditions. It requires districts to establish consequences for violations such as confiscation, disciplinary measures under the code of student conduct. Mandates districts to submit their wireless communication policies to North Carolina Department of Public Instruction and update them upon changing. DPI must report annually to the Joint Legislative Education Oversight Committee on district compliance. So, this will have some change, will have an impact on our policy for the use of wireless devices, policy forty-three eighteen. The rationale for the new law is designed to reduce distractions, improve student well-being and promote focused learning environments. Our goal is to align with these priorities while respecting the communication needs of families. Our policy, our current policy allows students to possess devices as long as they're not visible or used during instructional time. While flexible, it lacks structure, structured enforcement and storage guidance. The North Carolina School Board Association has provided two models. There's option A that allows possession with limits, and option B, which is stricter. It requires devices to be stored or turned off unless authorized. In your red folder, there's a, a table, a side-by-side comparison of our policy and the proposed options, and you'll notice the differences in definitions, enforcement and storage requirements. So, you have, in the second line, it's our current policy forty-three eighteen, and then proposed option A and proposed option B. After careful review, our leadership team is recommending a soft launch this fall, just letting everybody know about the policy and just making sure that students, families and staff are informed, and then the law is required to go into effect in January twenty-twenty-six. And that's where we would have a hard launch in terms of code of conduct, staff training, just making sure that, that we're enforcing the law and that it's consistent, there can be clear communication and some kind of feedback, feedback loop about the policy. Because I would imagine it's going to change just discipline and, and just, just how we approach things. And so, it's gonna have an impact, you know, on student climate, I mean, school climate, and also just administrators having to deal with the, you know, the implementation of the policy. Are there any questions about the bail-to-bail no cell law?
Good luck. That's tough. I, I would just say that, just being one of seven people on this board, that K eight's gonna be no problem with whatever you put in. Nine twelve is gonna be a little, little different, and if you come back and say, we're gonna put the hammer down on kids that don't follow the policy after we've gone over it and gone over it, I'd be fine with that, because if you don't have some consequences for it, you just might as well throw the policy away. That's my, that's, that's a, that's a high school principal topic.
I can hear it.
You could hear it, because a kid having a cellphone out is not the problem. It's when a teacher or administrator says, you gotta put it up, can I have it? Then the disrespect and all that comes in. So, I just say, go away with all that stuff and just put the hammer down.
And board members, I will note, so, so you're not bringing the policy tonight, right? Because it's, it's required by January. You know, what the law says is that you have to have a policy that they have to be away during instructional time. So, I think where districts have some room to make your own rules is how do you define instructional time? So, some districts are choosing to define it, tardy bell to dismissal is instructional time. So, it's away for the day, they call it, like, no, no devices. But you could define it differently at the high school. Like, you could say lunch is not instructional time at the high school, you can have it at lunch.
Right.
You know, so you have room to make those decisions, those policy decisions, and you have some time to think about it. But it's a good idea to start letting families know so that they're not buying new devices at school and then they have to, can't have them starting in January.
And you gotta be specific, I'm gonna tell you this, you gotta be specific, because when you say instructional time, I deal with kids walking down the hallway on the phone. You know, actually, it's not instructional time, you know, so, you gotta be very specific.
Because I think you say what instructional time is.
Right.
But as you said, you got to put it in writing for them.
Yeah, you gotta put it in writing, be very, be willing to enforce it, because I can tell you this, parents are gonna take the kids' side, most of the parents, ninety-nine percent of the parents are gonna, and I paid for that phone and, you know, these phones are going for almost three thousand dollars now. These iPhones are two thousand eight hundred dollars. And so, you know, even, even if they know that they're gonna get them back, they don't want you to touch their kids' phone. So, you gotta be very- So you gotta be very specific in whatever we do, we need to be very specific and see no gray area.
I agree with that, when we get, we will, what my plan is, is to start with the school board's association's. Base policy that they're gonna send out to us all and then sorta tailor that to make it work, define instructional time and all that to get something that. Makes sense for us, we talked about the soft launch as uh Mr. Ingram just said, just because. You know, we feel like we need to say something to people, including the board, because you're gonna, you all will probably. Start to get questions about that, because cellphones are just a hot topic.
A student asked me at church.
Yeah, they're hot topics, yeah.
Thank you for sharing that, Chris.
Some more to come. Also in the folder, um I think you asked for a side-by-side of um the remote participation in board meetings, um like um. Learn me not to put it in there.
Yeah, I see. Yeah, here it is.
Yep. And it's up for approval for adoption tonight, but I know there was some discussion about that.
And I'm sorry, which draft is on for tonight of, cause I know we looked at one that would be more. Or I sent one that would be more generous.
And this is the one I that was recommended by the school, the school board association.
Okay. So it's suggested by the school board association is, I think, more restrictive than it needs to be. As far as. Only allowing um. Remote meetings during, if there's a state of emergency. I I don't think that's legally required, I think that you can go back to the system you had before. Twenty twenty-one, which would said that you can have a remote meeting, um so if you are interested in that, I can provide. You know, we have an alternate draft. That would just revert us back to. To that previous policy.
Well, we did s- talk about that if somebody wasn't here, yes, we would like to have that available.
Okay.
And we also talked about them being able to vote.
Okay.
By voice. So do we need to just stop this policy?
I think we should pull this one then and use the one that that I sent.
Yeah, can't, yeah, I agree with that, y'all agree with that?
We can bring it back next time, it doesn't seem like there's any urgency to it.
And I guess my question would be, how many times can a. A member participate in a remote meeting situation? I think that need to be specified too, you don't wanna have a situation where that end up being a habit. Where the member, I mean, I I get it, you know, there are situations where you just can't make the meeting, but if you. We're meeting, let's say we meet twelve times a year, you only, and nine of the times it are remote meetings, that to me is a problem. And I'm pretty sure as a taxpayer, that would be a problem too, it's just something to think about.
On the handout that Mr. Ingram has, it says what, max three times you're allowed a year? So that's what, a quarter of the time, yeah, that's, yeah, that's, that's, to me, that's a.
And that's in either draft, no, no more than three times unless. You know, unless the board votes to allow them to do it more, like if they have an extenuating circumstance.
Melvin, let's just table that one, okay, and we'll uh. We'll we'll look at it and maybe we can get.
Can he put state one on on here, like another column for him, put the state?
Well, I think she, but Eva's Eva, you're gonna get us that policy, right? So once they, once Eva gives you that policy, could you make a third column on that piece of paper?
Oh, sure, yes, I can.
So, so then we can read the policy and then.
That would be great.
Yep.
Okay.
Great.
This being the conclusion of the thirty-day review period, I would like to present these policies for adoption. Thirteen hundred, governing principle parental involvement, thirteen ten. Forty oh two, parent parental involvement, fifteen hundred, governing principle, uh safe, orderly and inviting environment. Fifteen ten, forty-two hundred, seventy-two seventy, school safety, fifteen fifteen ten, forty-two hundred, seventy-two seventy R, uh school safety. Uh sixteen hundred, governing principle, professional development, twenty-three ten. No, yeah, twenty-three ten, public participation at board meetings, twenty-three forty-two, voting methods, thirty-two twenty-five, forty-three twelve, seventy-three twenty. Technology responsibly used, and forty-three sixteen, student dress code.
Melvin, on forty-three sixteen, student dress code, uh bottom attire item number three has been stricken from it. Spandex shorts are prohibited when not worn as undergarments, that's being taken out, can I ask what the logic in that is? Or whose request that was?
It was school administrators that requested that change, um uh it was really not being enforced consistently and then it just, I guess. The way students are dressing, it just wasn't, you know, it just was strict, too restrictive, that's what they said, you know.
I have a concern with that, you know, we we started, we put a lot of work in, you guys put a lot of work into this this dress code. And to start relaxing it is a concern, because that's what happened with the uniform policy and that's why we ended up in the position that we ended up in with that. So me personally, I don't think that should be taken out, I I do not think that spandex shorts should are appropriate. Unless worn as an undergarment. I just wanna put that out there.
I remember that the discussion on that was the um. Because so many things were made with spandex now, I don't know, I wish you could, unlike him, I, that's what Cory and I were talking about, the. Cellphone, if you're not consistent. Then it won't work, and that was what was wrong with the um dress code policy, schools were not consistent. So could we pull that back out, what the discussion, I we we talked about spandex. But I don't remember what.
I know they're wearing jeggings and I, you know, there's a lot, you know, tights and, you know, and I think the thing was. I think we took out the one about covering your bottom and all that kind of thing and and now, well, yes, um spandex, but I think it does have um a lot to do with. Um and just, you know, what they, you know, are choosing to wear to school, um and just the um ability to really enforce it.
Yeah, if I remember the discussion with principals correctly. It was just that discussion, the jeggings and the yoga pants and all that are allowed. And they're made out of the same material, so if the spandex shorts meet the length requirement. Then why would we not allow shorts made out of the same material as say the, but that's what the discussion was.
I understand, I guess my my thoughts or what I think spandex shorts are just does not sound appropriate.
Yeah.
If that makes sense.
Absolutely.
So we let them wear spandex pants.
Yoga pants are spandex pants.
Yoga pants.
Stretch material.
Yep, I know, yep.
I I guess with the length thing in there, it makes better sense.
They're they're caught, they're very expensive.
Yeah, yeah, I bet.
They're all fitted, and you're gonna get the same look, but the shorts can possibly, if they're not at proper length, show more actual skin.
Oh, completely.
So you you have to, so you would definitely have to. Determine how. Long those sho- how short those shorts can be.
Which is six inches above the knee is what it raises.
That's, and that's defined in the policy already, yes.
But is it enforced?
I think you go from there, if it's defined as six inches above the knee, go from there.
If the six inches above the knee is enforced, I'm fine with it.
Well, and that just goes back to Ms. Orangeby's case, it just has to be consistent, has to be very consistent across the board with everybody.
And we'll make sure we, you know, review this with school administrators and for the administration, you know, make sure everybody's aware.
I would like to prevent, I would like to prevent males from wearing.
Second.
Fortunately, we've not had that concern.
I hope we, I hope we don't, I don't, we don't have that problem.
Hope that common sense prevents.
Okay, so we have the ten, we have the ten um policies presented by Mr. Ingram, up for approval, do I have a motion to approve them?
So moved.
Have a motion by Mr. Baldwin, second by Mr. Mason, any further discussion? All of everybody saying aye? All opposed? And then you'll bring back the uh the uh remote one next month.
And and I'll include it in the policy, uh policies to review.
Cause that was eleven, but we only accepted ten.
So policies to review um for thirty-day review, sixty-two twenty, operation of school nutrition services. Sixty-three thirty, insurance um of for student transportation services, seventy-one hundred, recruitment and selection of personnel, seventy-one thirty. Licensure, seventy-three thirty-five, uh employee use of social media, seventy-three forty, employee dress and appearance. Seventy-eight twenty, personnel files, ninety-two ten, care of maintenance of grounds and outdoor equipment and um. Twenty-three oh two, remote participation in board meetings. Thank you.
I would like to also, so we're talking about policies, right? I would like to ask that the board consider um revising. The appeal process policy that we currently have. I've been on this board for quite a while now, and it seems to me. That if a parent or a person is filing a grievance, follow follows all the steps. That they're supposed to. Since I've been on the board, the board has voted not to hear. The grievance of that person that has gone through all those steps and processes. We are consistently voting not to hear the people uh that are filing these grievances. For whatever reason they are, uh and I have, I've set through three now. With even best was also denied the right to address the the board. If we, if the board is gonna deny. If the board is gonna deny people the right to address them. Then, you know, you're wasting people, I feel like we're wasting people's time. And I would like to see that policy changed, that if a person goes through all the steps that they're supposed to. The board should be required to hear that person out. That's what I want you to think about, that we should hear those people out. If they going through all the steps we asked them to go through, I think the board should be required to hear what that person has to say. If they took in all the time to go through the proper steps, to so that they can talk to the board. This is the third time. Uh that someone, since I've been on the board, wanted to address the board, they went through all the proper steps. And our board has says, no, we don't wanna hear it. I I just don't think that's right. And I've always voted to hear the person. Because I think they go, they they follow the the process. And and when you get to that point where they get the appeal to the board. I think the board needs to hear, that person has the right to be heard. To appeal and talk to the board, I would like to, I would like to, I don't know, we could, um. I don't know how we go about that process, but I think we need to consider it, looking at that policy. And I would vote for a change in that policy, because you're wasting people's time, if you already know that you're gonna say, no, I don't want, we're not gonna listen to it. Then you're wasting people's time of going through the process. Why make these, why make the public go through all these steps just for the board to say, no, we don't wanna hear it? I would think the board, I think the board should be obligated to hear if that person is going through all the steps. I think you should be obligated to hear. Now, I'm a person that was real upset on two of these situations, one being hers. And the other one, we, I wouldn't bring that up because I don't wanna relive it. Relive, relive and all that, uh but I think we should be obligated to hear if they taking the time to go through each and every step. I like to uh hopefully get the board to agree to hear these people if they've taken the time to go through all the steps. Cause you still can deny having been listened to, give the people the opportunity to speak and address the board. If they follow every step, and I, and since I've been on the board. The board has denied each one of those individuals the right to do that. I just don't think that's right. So Melvin, could, is it possible that you can pull that policy? Or is it something that we need to talk about and?
There's several, there's several policies.
So that would be policy seventeen forty, the student and parent grievance procedure, is that the one?
Yeah.
Which right now provides that there are certain topics that the board is required to hear if it appealed to the board and other topics that are discretionary. Um so I think if the board, if the majority of the board voted, you could have a motion to ask the administration to re- to revise that in a certain way. I think you would need a majority, right? And to ask the, to you know, to direct the administration what revision you would like to see brought back.
Well, it would involve several, what, cause you said parent, student, and then there's employee grievance, and then what other there is?
Well, basically comes down to two things, whether it.
Those are the only ones I'm aware of.
Yeah, whether it's policy or law. Does it break policy or break law?
Yeah, those are required, the board are.
The board has to hear that, the board doesn't have to hear it like what Daryl was saying, if it doesn't break policy or board, so then this board would have to decide. Do they, what do they wanna do away with that? If a parent goes through the process of it not breaking policy or law.
Yeah, you would be changing the part that about discretionary grievances.
That is correct.
Yeah.
Yes, so that would be seventeen forty and seventeen fifty.
Yeah.
So I think the administration can bring back revisions to a future agenda, but they need. Some guidance from the board on what you want to see ideally through some sort of motion.
I I just, I just think that we as board need to to agree on whether or not. That we're going to hear, listen or provide an opportunity for individuals to address us if they follow all the steps. They've gone through the pain and the time to follow all the steps. I believe that those individuals need to be heard by the board, that's what I'm saying. They've gone through all the steps, they've done everything that superintendent says they have to do. The board says that they have to do to get to that point, if it gets to that point, I think we should be obligated to listen. And not have the power to just say, no, we don't wanna hear it.
So one point of clarification, that entire process is guided by policy, um from beginning to end, yes, and so. It's like Eva was saying, if it's. And well, and Cory as well, if it is a violation of law or the board's policy or state board policy, then. The board is required to hear it, if there is no allegation of a violation of law or policy, that makes it discretionary. Our policy current, the board's policy currently reads that if it is a discretionary grievance, it has to be brought to the board. For the board to decide whether or not they're gonna hear it, and what I'm hearing you say is that you. for the board to decide whether or not they're gonna hear it, and what I'm hearing you say is that you think that the discretion, that discretionary grievances should also be heard automatically if everyone has followed the process.
Yes.
But what Eva is saying is, we can bring that back to the board for consideration if the board directs us to do that through a motion and a majority vote.
Right, so if you wanted to make a motion to direct the administration to bring back a revision to the policy that would make all grievance give, give automatic board hearings for all grievances. Does that cover what you are trying to cover?
Basically, all grievances that have gone through all the proper steps.
That have followed the steps, yeah.
So basically, we're saying, what Daryl is saying is that for every time a teacher, principal, and a superintendent say to the parent, no, that is the final decision on a discretionary item. If we were to change that policy, we would have to hear everything. We would have to hear a child not making the baseball team, a child's grade not being what it should be, a child's unexcused absence, and I can go on and on and on, because once they go to the teacher, to the principal level, the only level they have is to the superintendent, and then it would come to us. So, under discretionary terms, you're talking about thirteen, fourteen schools and all parents who get mad for a decision that was made. So, I just want everybody to know what, I understand what Daryl's saying, but what you're up against.
If they file a grievance.
If they file the grievance.
I still say, if they go through the process, they complete, it should be heard. Uh, you know, you can, you can say this and that and that, I just think if you got the process that these people go through, they, they've written their letters, they've done the due diligence, that it gets to the point where they want to address the board concerned, and it, it's not like it's gonna take three or four hours. I think the person should have the right to be heard, that's just me. And if you guys disagree then, that's, I make the motion that, uh, that we consider changing the policy, the grievance policy, the discretionary part of the grievance policy to allow those who follow the complete process to be heard by the board.
So that's a motion you're making right now? So I have a motion by Mr. Mason to change the policy, what number policy is it?
Seventeen forty and seventeen fifty.
Seventeen forty and seventeen fifty to do away with the discretionary part.
That's right.
I had a discussion, but I know we can't get to that, that part.
So I have, I have, I have a motion by Mr. Mason, do I have a second?
I agree with a lot, a lot of what you say, but I wish, I think, I wish we could bring it to a conversation. To have a discussion where we can talk more about what you're saying and look at all the parameters.
And then we have a discussion, and then it can be voted down, you still can vote it down. So it's, I mean-
I make a second, cause I would like to have, have a discussion on that.
I have a second by Mr. Tillman. Do we have any discussion?
Yes, so, you know, I agree with some of what you're saying, Mr. Mason, but there are situations where, and I'm thinking back to a situation that we had with, involving the staff. Okay, where everything was done correctly on, on the school's side, and even to the point, and this is my opinion, even to the point where that stat very belligerent and disrespectful to not only their direct supervisor, but even the, the personnel person. And in that case, for me, at that point, I, as a board member, I, there's nothing else that you could say. So there are situations where there are gonna be times where, for me, I don't wanna hear it. I mean, if, 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 if everything was done correctly on the school's side, and you've done some things that, I'm just speaking in that situation as an employee that make the situation worse, where, you know, you've acted out in front of your colleagues and even students. To me, I don't wanna hear anything. I think in that situation, no. But now, as far as like a parent that's gone through the process, and that's one of the things, I, I do think, you know, um, in some situations, parents are, people need to be heard, and it just depends on the situation. You know, it depends on the situation. I'll use, for example, if, eh, you know, if a person was, uh, if a parent was very disrespectful and belligerent to, to the, the, the principal, to, to the staff, and then they're still requesting a hearing, in that case, I don't wanna hear it. For me, as a board member, I think it stops with me, because although you've gone through the process, you was disrespectful in the process to the people that was trying to hear and work with you, that's just me. So there are situations where I think there are exceptions for, you know, um, for people being able to, to be heard in front of the board, that's just my, my personal opinion.
Any other comments?
Or are there, is there an additional step that we could put in somewhere? So that like a panel of some members hear things instead of, um, I mean, cause I agree with you, people need to be heard in, in certain situ-, but it is, uh, according to the situation too. And I hear what you say Cory, and that we won't, don't want to, um, have to hear everything necessarily, but I mean, what, we've only had a few grievances anyway, so for, there just to be a few, I don't have a problem with hearing them, but we don't wanna open up a can of worms to where we have to.
If I may, Mr. Chair, any grievance can be heard by a panel, the, the chair can appoint a panel. Um, there's certain exceptions like student transfer appeals, but, um, you know, the, the board then is bound and has to, um, be comfortable leaving it to whatever those two to three board members decide. So I, my understanding is historically, the chair has left it to the board, are you, do you all want to be there or just have a panel?
The, the only two grievances that, that, since I've been on the board, which is, this is going on my fourth year, that we as a board talked about it in closed session, as a, as a board, it wasn't a panel, like we do at transfers and so forth like that. So that's the way it would have to be, I think the whole board would have to have a say so in that.
Yeah, I just say you wouldn't have to change your policy to allow for panels, it already allows for it, but historically, the board has preferred not to do that.
Right. Any other conversation? All right, so we had a motion by Mr. Mason, a second by Mr. Tillman, so what we're voting on now is to change.
I think what you're voting on is to direct administration to bring back, because you can't really change, you need to have in front of you.
Yeah, right.
But, direct administration to bring it back, changed in such a way that all board hearings are automatic.
That's correct.
With, if they follow the policy.
Oh, and you're saying all, in all situations?
All situations. So to bring back some, what do you say, what's the word I'm looking for, bring back?
Bring back a revised version.
Bring back a revised seventeen forty, seventeen fifty policy for board consideration. So I need a vote of all in favor of bringing that back.
So you're saying all.
But is there a way to put some parameters in that?
Right now, you can't because you, you don't have the prob-, you gotta, you gotta look at the policy. That's for them to bring back to us. But they would have to change seventeen forty, seventeen fifty to do away with the discretionary part of it, that's what Mr. Mason's asking.
Well, can I vote no to that, but then make a motion?
Well, I'm, I'm, well, I'm calling for the vote right now, so, uh, but we're still, evidently we still have the, uh, discussion.
Okay, well.
I just, let's do it this way.
No, wait, go ahead.
Let me rescind my motion. Can I?
Sure.
Let me rescind my motion and, uh, let's table this for discussion during work session. Can we do that? Can we table it for discussion during work session?
Yeah, I don't-
I, I would rather have a vote.
Yeah, however.
I'd rather have a vote and see if people want to do it, and then we have the discussion on how we want it to look. Would you all be a good?
Yes.
Okay.
So, again, we have a motion on table to look at revised, we're revising policy seventeen forty, seventeen fifty, directing the superintendent to bring back some issues. All in favor of that, please raise your right.
Wait a minute, clarify that motion again?
Clarifying that we're bringing back a policy from them, seventeen forty, seventeen fifty, with some revisions in it that we've talked about tonight for us to look at.
Right.
So we're not, we're not approving a policy.
Right, you could ask them to bring it back and then decide not to adopt it. I just think they need guidance from a majority about what you're asking them to do. So that's where the-
Okay, well, I'm in favor to that.
All right, so all in favor of revising?
And you're putting the word all in there.
There is no other way to do it.
That was the motion, was that it's, it be automatic hearings for all.
Yeah, and I don't know that there is any other way to do it because that's what makes it discretionary.
Right, if a parent decides, goes through all the steps like Mr. Mason said, then you would, the board would have to hear it. So all in favor of the, of the board, of central office bringing us back a revised policy? Need to raise a right hand.
For all.
For all.
But it doesn't mean you have to accept it when we bring it back, you could review it.
Well, I, I, yeah, I, I do at least.
All right, three. All opposed. So it is opposed.
Can I add one thing? We're not saying, tell me if I'm right Eva, we're, our policy now says we can, we still discuss it and decide if we want to vote for, we, I, I mean, to hear it.
It requires you to discuss it, so right.
So we're not taking that out, we should-
And as she said, like, if, if it's, if they're saying that law or policy was violated, you hear it, it's automatic. So it's just when, when it's an issue that isn't that, it's a matter of discretion. Which means right now, your policy is we make a case by case decision.
But who's deciding if it's, um, discretionary or, uh, mandatory?
She, she will let us know, our lawyer.
Typically, we read what the parent or employee wrote, and they'll, do they say it's a violation of law or policy or not, if, yeah.
So let me just be clear though, is that I fully understand what Mr. Mason is saying, fully understand what he is saying. But to me, under the preference of why I was voted on to this board and my duties as a board member is to uphold policy and law. And that's what I go with, and that's why I make decisions, like what Daryl said, based on the last couple of times we've had grievances, I've voted certain ways, is because if it fits that mold, then yes, but if we break a po-, a law or, or, or our policy, without a doubt, and I want the parent, the child, the teacher, whoever it is, the employee, to have their say so. But if it's not that way, then we could get ourselves in a sticky situation if that happens, so.
I, I, I still feel the same way I do, um, and maybe it's just, just situations where I just feel, being a board member, that we should at least heard that person, because they had a legitimate, um, a complaint, a legitimate complaint, um, um, and for, to see the board just says, well, no, I don't want to hear it, we don't wanna hear it, after that person has gone through all the steps. I just think that's wrong, I just personally. So, well, it's gonna take you, it's gonna require you to spend a little extra effort, spend a little extra time to listen. So what? Maybe, maybe that's a legitimate, legitimate reasons why it needs to be heard. Um, and I just, I just go, I just think if somebody takes the time and effort to follow our process so that they can come before the board, I think they should be granted that opportunity, that's just what I feel.
Thank you, Mr. Ingram. Dr. Farrell?
Um, policy forty-one thirty-five, tuition for discretionary admissions reads in part that unless provided otherwise in this policy, tuition will be charged to students admitted under board policy forty-one thirty, um, discretionary admission. If the students are not domiciled in the state or are domiciled in the state and reside outside of the school system's boundaries, tuition may not exceed the local per pupil allocation for current expense as provided by the Board of Commissioners, and tuition rate will be determined annually by the board no later than August first. We are a little bit past August first, um, but, um, the, um, so I'm asking you if you want to set a tuition amount. In the past, um, you all have not opted to set a tuition amount. We have very few discretionary, um, admissions to the district, but the amount is two thousand one hundred thirty-five dollars and sixty-eight cents per pupil, um, as of right now.
And, and so this would be for students who live, essentially live in other counties and are seeking to come to Richmond County schools?
Outs. Yes.
How many students are we talking about?
Very, very few, um, like-
Ten or less, or five or less today?
So we would not, it would, we would not charge this to our employees' children, and that's the bulk of our students who are approved from outside the district. I had, um, Jenny and I had talked about it, uh, last week, and did you, how many, did you, how many did you tell me we had?
So currently, your tuition rate is zero?
Currently, it has, they, the board, um, does not usually charge the, historically has not charged tuition.
And if you do it for one, you would have to do it for all, so you would, that would be something you would tax your own employees with if they're the board?
No, there are, there are, you can exempt employees, there are reasons here, tuition may be waived, and it lists some of those things, and the student's parents who are employed by the school system is number six.
Okay, I got it.
Yeah, so this would be for true discretionary admissions, um, which are, and, and, um, just to be clear, you all are the only ones that approve a discretionary admission, so that has to be by policy brought to the board for, with a recommendation from me.
I know that two previous counties that I worked in, they did this per pupil. If a child came into their county, they would charge them. And I think a lot of the counties do that, I don't know offhand the number, but I do know a lot of counties do that.
It's, and it's tied to the local funding, so that's why it's capped at twenty-one hundred a year, because they are not, the idea is they're not paying taxes in Richmond County.
Right, but they're using all of our stuff.
But you still get state funding for those students.
That's right. And so.
So do we need a motion? Or anything, Joe, what do we need to do?
I need, well, if, yes, I need a motion to either leave it at zero or, uh, move it to some amount between zero with a maximum of two thousand one hundred thirty-five dollars and sixty-eight cents, because you can't go beyond that.
I'll make a motion to leave it as it is, at zero.
Have a, have a motion by Mr. Baldwin, do I have a second?
Yeah, second, yeah.
Second by Mr. Tillman, any further discussion? All favor by saying, by saying aye?
Uh-uh.
All opposed, aye? So six to one?
Okay.
Sorry.
Well, since, I mean, the voting is over, but if it became a problem, or if it became, can we come, come back and revisit it?
Well, you have to, by policy, you're supposed to, um, address it annually by August first. So yes, the answer to your question is yes.
I mean, it's never been a problem, so that's why we didn't, we don't have it on an amount.
And none of us have the authority to approve fifty students to come in here from other districts, discretionary admissions have to be approved by the board. So you would know if it was getting out of control, because I'd be bringing you a lot of them.
Next item would be the international trips. Dr. Farrell, again, you're busy.
Yeah, so you all have, um, discussed the international trips a number of times and asked for particular information. I have given you all that information, as well as the board's attorney, and, um, so at this time, I'm gonna turn it over to her to kinda lead the discussion. I have given you all that information, as well as the board's attorney, and, um, so at this time, I'm gonna turn it over to her to kinda lead the discussion with you.
Um, so, currently, board members, I mean, I understand that this has arisen because there's been a practice of having an international trip each year that has been brought to the board for approval, even though it's, it's optional and organized through a private tour operator. Um, your board policy thirty-three twenty, um, indicate, differentiates between school trips and non-school trips, or non-school sponsored trips. And it says that, um, school trips, first of all, will not be international, or school sponsored, you know, fall under all of the rules that we would follow for a school sponsored trip. A non-school trip would be these trips that are organized by an individual teacher, or a group of teachers, or a travel agency, and that the board and the school system do not assume responsibility or liability for those trips. And so, I think the question is, you know, obviously, because the, this annual international trip has been approved by the board, it's sort of been either outside either of those categories, or sort of waiving this policy. Um, and I think there was a desire to discuss going forward whether you want to stop engaging with those trips and, and leave them fully non-school sponsored. Is that, have I captured it correctly?
Yep, you did.
No, I have a question. Okay, so, we don't, they don't need our approval to do it, so there's no reason for us to vote on it. Uh, so, if they are, um, gathering the information and getting these students to sign up to go during school time, does that change it in any way?
The policy says staff members who are organizing non-school trips should not be using their work time to do so, that it should be after hours. So, I think the, the, the decision you have to make is it's not just as simple as, okay, we're gonna stop approving it. If you want this to be hands-off, you're gonna have to be hands-off, right? Which means we're also not making the rules for it, and we're not, you know, using our school resources to promote it. And this, and these trips are common, I mean, as far as, you know, a foreign language teacher or whatever hooks up with one of these travel agencies, and it's something they offer to parents. Um, that's a common practice, I think it's just at a very large scale at Richmond Senior High School historically.
Well, can, is there any way we can, um, specify that? But then you're setting rules, I was gonna say, if we say, you can't even do anything with it until five, till five o'clock.
Well, that's what it says right now, right now, it says, "School employees shall not engage in any planning or administrative tasks associated with a non-school sponsored trip during the work day."
Well, then we just need to enforce the policy.
And they must use leave time if they miss work to go on the trip.
That's right.
We just need to enforce the policy.
'Cause I'm all for the trip, I just don't wanna have anything to do with it, we don't know who goes on that trip, and I don't want anything coming, I'm like Ronald, I don't want anything coming back on us. Nothing at all, I do not wanna be part of this trip, I don't want them doing it during the school day, I don't want them using our paper, making advertisements, if they wanna do it, they do it on their time.
And currently, the policy, again, if we were to, in the future, bring this annual trip on, back under the policy, says that, that the parents and students have to be notified that this is not a school sponsored trip, and have to sign acknowledgement that they understand that. That is.
Who sends that out?
The, whoever is the sponsor, so typically, my understanding is with these tour operators, they recruit one or more teachers
They have it, yeah.
to be like the school sponsor.
So, as it stands right now, by approving it, are we dipping our foot into the pool of liability?
I think so.
I thought last year, Mr. Baldwin, that we approved that they could use our facility to hold meetings. I did not, we did not approve the trip, I thought we approved just for them to be able to use our facilities to have meetings and so forth, and so on like that, because we had found that, you had told us beforehand that we did not need to approve it.
Right, and, and allowing them to use a facility, I mean, the policy does say, you know, school employees can use a facility to hold a meeting for it, they just need to reserve it the way anybody would for a scouting troop or other non-school activity.
And after-school hours, after their work hours.
Which would not require board approval, right?
Not typically, I don't think so.
No.
So, if a teacher wastes their after-school hours, do they, you still use our facility?
To the same extent that they can use it for any other activity that's not a school sponsored activity. So, if a teacher has a scouting troop, or, I don't know, another example, but.
If facilities used for them, they have to fill it out.
Yeah, they have to reserve it like a citizen.
But then we could, but we could also waive the fee, so that, I mean, that's kinda standard, so.
And it sounds like it's gonna be a training issue, too, I mean, you know, with the staff, so they understand what the policy says and.
Yes, I agree.
And understand, you know, like, this is how this is gonna work.
And we don't want, you know, we don't begrudge anybody going on a trip, we just, we don't wanna be part of it. We do not Richmond, Richmond County.
Well, the good news is, is we're talking about very, very few staff that get themselves involved in these trips anyway, usually it's one a year, so.
But now, as far as the trips that we've already approved, I mean, we're just locked in, we're, that those trips are approved.
I mean, I think you could send a clarification to the school community that these trips are, you know, under our policy, these are non-school sponsored trips, and that, um, the board is not assuming responsibility for them.
Which at this point, the last international trip is already done, so, is it not?
We've approved twenty-six and twenty-seven.
Oh, it is. So, can we get a letter that they have to sign saying what you just said?
Mm-hmm.
And that's one of the pieces of paper that.
Yes, you may get part of the sign up.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's approved for the next two summers, it's twenty-six and twenty-seven right now.
Oh, I didn't know the twenty-seven was.
Mm-hmm.
Who did, who, Daniel Diggs is doing this, this one coming up, who did the twenty-seven?
And Ashley Larson.
But again, so, if you look at the paper that Dr. Farrell gave us, it says for all graduating students in the twenty-sixth year, and then it goes on to say, but we're not making the rules.
Right, if we're going hands-off, we're going hands-off.
We're going hands-off, they can, they can take you wherever they want to, it don't matter to me, I just want to make sure that we have nothing to do with these trips. Personally, now, the board might think otherwise.
I agree with you.
Do we need anything from you, for, do we need to make a motion or anything like that? No, we're good. Is everybody okay with that?
And we're gonna make sure that, I guess, staff understands that policy and train, right?
Yeah, that's right.
Staff need to make sure that the people don't anticipate, understand that, they, you know, don't make them think that the school, school board is liable or supporting this event.
Yeah. 'Cause again, we don't know who goes, we don't know the chaperones that go on this trip, we have nobody who did who goes on this trip. Man, I don't wanna, I, I kinda like my house.
Me, too.
Yeah.
Right.
All right, Dr. Farrell, Director of Safety and Security.
Yeah, so at the last, uh, meeting, we discussed, um, a Director of Safety and Security position, and you all, um, authorized me to bring back a job description, and so, thanks to, uh, the work of a number of people, I think ultimately, uh, Melvin Ingram kinda put it all together for us, but this is where we, where we landed on the job description. And so, but I'll, we will attempt to answer any questions that you have, but.
I thought it was very thorough.
Mm-hmm.
So, I did miss that conversation due to everything going on last time, when I had to exit pretty quick. Uh, but I was looking over this, just one thing I would love to see added to this, is I would really like this to be a sworn position, almost an additional SRO. If we could, if we could kinda, if there's, and this may be an overstep, but if the, we could kinda work that into it where it just seems like it'd be an additional resource for an SRO. With them already, I think, 'cause there was a requirement for seven years of experience in law enforcement, so hopefully, they would be BLT certified still, and it would just make an extra option for boots on the ground.
Would you need sort of coordination with the sheriff to? I, in the event that they're not currently sworn?
I would think our school police would suffice for that.
Um, that's right, I forgot you forgot Daryl's.
Since we have our own, yeah.
It was, okay.
Any other thoughts or questions?
So, just going on what Scotty said, would we need, he would need to be trained, certified in that, School Resource Officer, right, that's what you're saying?
Well, at least have a, at least have a certificate for basic law enforcement training that could be activated. You know, we're, we're requiring seven years of law enforcement experience, so there's a good possibility that person's already gonna have a BLT cert.
Can we say something about in the, in the job description that we would like to see? What's the word I'm looking for, that they would be BLT certified, uh, they would, um.
Yeah, what we've, what we've.
I'm, I'm losing, I'm missing a word, but I won't.
Yeah, so what we have right now is education and experience.
Optional, so.
Yeah.
Preferred?
Preferred, thank you.
BLT certification or preferred sworn?
Well, it's, I, I guess I'm, I may be trying to morph this into something that it can't be. So, it's, it's a Director of Safety and Security, but I would like to see it kind of also be a sworn law enforcement position inside of that. Is that a, am I over, am I overextending the position?
Uh, no, not necessarily, I, now, this, this position is not gonna supervise our current, um, special police, because, um, Chief Rush is still gonna report to you in the training room. But I, I don't necessarily see that it would be a problem to have that person, that he or she be a sworn officer.
So, this person's more like a consultant to, that for as, making suggestions of keeping our sys- our school system safe?
Yeah, and doing, um, you know, the key responsibilities of implement, developing and implementing, you know, the district safety and risk management plan, you know, um, being the liaison with the emerg- with the, um, inter-agency coordination, just all of, all of that, drills. Ultimately, this person would, um, coordinate in district, district-wide emergency drills, lockdowns, evacuations, and so forth, just a true safety director.
So, what I'm thinking may not marry into that as well, so, I, I mean, it, it's fine just like it is, but I was just thinking if there was a way to create an additional SRO position inside of that one. You know, I've, I've told you several times, my, in my perfect world, we have an SRO at every school in this district.
Oh, definitely.
And I was just thinking this may be a way to, to get a piece of that.
Okay, yeah, we can, we can look into how to, to do that. I think with the, I do think that with the, um, education and experience requirements, you're, we're probably gonna end up with a sworn officer. And then it's a matter of figuring out, making sure that we keep that person a sworn officer.
Any further questions, Your Honor?
Your Honor. All right, comments from any board members?
I had, I had the opportunity to go to the meeting that, uh, Steven was talking about, I think Bob, so you went to, didn't you? And, uh, it was interesting to see the different mindsets, to see the four different, uh, designs that came up, and then talk about all the different things involved in it. And then I also went by and, uh, visited principals at their new locations, just to see how they were doing. And that, that was interesting, uh, also, and I went by, uh, over at the high school and walked through the gym, the new gym, and really does look good, re- you know, I'm proud that we've, we've got that in place. And, uh, also went by, um, yesterday and met the new, uh, beginning teachers. And I know my first year teaching, the principal took me to my school, my classroom, and said, "Have a nice year." That was my beginning teacher. And I'm so glad that Richmond County has things in place to help people, you know, help them go through and, uh, learn how to teach, and then, then have somebody that can say, uh, "Let me, let me talk to you," you know, and encourage you this way, or do something different. I think it's just great what we got in place.
Thank God for the title, too, money.
I did owe that, you know, that's near and dear to my heart, but I went by the orientation yesterday, too, and spent a while with them yesterday afternoon, and it was, um, some great things going on.
Anybody else? Just wanna remind everybody that Richmond Senior High's dedication is Friday at nine. I guess we'll do that, are we gonna do it right in the gym, or right outside?
Right in the front.
Right in the front. And then don't forget, next Wednesday, the twentieth, we have a, the teacher breakfast in the morning, and then we have convocation, uh, that Wednesday, uh, the twentieth. And then we also have a work session on the twenty-sixth at five o'clock here, which is the twenty-sixth. Dr. Farrell?
Yeah, so, um, we had a successful start to the school year for Reach today, um, Cameron and I visited, I'm not sure if any other members of my team visited, but, um, we were there for a little while, and things were off and, uh, rolling. It was interesting to see, uh, Ms. McDonald adjusting from being an assistant principal at a traditional high school to a principal at an early college. She said, "These students just go to class." Yes, they do, and so, um, that, but they had a great, they had a great day. They had a great day, um, and so she's, she was excited about that. Um, uh, the, just to piggyback on what, uh, Cor just said, that breakfast starts at eight fifteen in the Richmond Senior High School cafeteria, so, um, Cameron has sent you, I believe, a list of dates, um, as the school year starts. And then, um, the last thing that I have is, um, so the Second Annual John C. Felder Day, which is dri- um, entitled Driving Towards Change, in honor of the Second Annual John Felder Day, Richmond County Schools has been invited to attend, um, the Driving Towards Change event, taking place on Saturday, August twenty-third, from twelve P M. until three P M. at the Rich, at Richmond Community College. Um, uh, Mr. Felder is a proud Richmond County native, began his educational journey at Capitol Highway Elementary School, and graduated from Monroe Avenue High School, class of nineteen sixty-two. Um, during this event, attendees will view the documentary highlighted Mr. Felder's, um, groundbreaking, highlighting Mr. Felder's groundbreaking achievements, including his historic role as the first person to export electric vehicles to Cuba, a milestone that reflects his commitment to sustainability and international collaboration. As part of his continu- continued dedication to giving back to Richmond County, Mr. Felder has announced plans to award at least two scholarships to Richmond County graduating seniors pursuing careers related to electric vehicles and sustainable transportation. The event is free and open to the public, but you must have a ticket, and if you would like a ticket, I understand Mr. Ingram has a nice little stack of those. Anything to add to that, Melvin? All right, and that's all I have.
Thank you.
One more date. And one more date, the, um, back to school prayer walk is, um, Saturday, August, um, twenty-third, nine o'clock at the Rock Church.
It's a good event.
So, need a mo- motion to enter into closed session pursuant to North County General Statute one four three, three one eight, eleven A one three, and six for personnel and property.
So, move. Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Mason, second by Mr. Baldwin, all favor by saying aye? We are now in closed session. We are now in closed session.
I'm asking for approval at this time.
Need approval of personal report and the addendum dated August twelfth, two thousand twenty-five.
Make a motion to accept the report.
Have a motion by Ms. Hornsby, a second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Schuler, any discussion? All in favor by saying aye.
Uh-huh.
All opposed? Thank you. Dr. Farrow, you have anything for the good or the cause?
I don't know. Thank you all for all your time today.
Need a motion to adjourn?
I move.
First by Ms. Baldwin, second by Ms. Mason, all in favor by saying aye.